We will go ahead and begin with our public hearing. This public hearing is on ordinance 2022-32. This is on MXU CC Zone. And no one signed up to speak on this ordinance. But if anyone in here right now is thinking of something that they would like to say, you can come on up to the podium. Fantastic. You guys are very prompt for the 7:30 meeting. I will go ahead and close this public hearing on ordinance 2022-32 MXU CC Zone. And we will begin our regularly scheduled town council meeting at 7:30. Thank you. I'm going to call this March 6th meeting of the Town Council to order. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast through CMC on local channel 23 as well as the town's Facebook page. And we will begin with the mayor with some check presentations as well as certificates of appreciation.
I'd like to ask John Cavell from J&amp;J Trash to come up. And Chief, if you could come up as well. One great thing about Mount Airy is we have terrific local businesses. They give back to the community. And in this case, what has happened is J&amp;J Trash Collection has decided to offer a check to the chief's fund for funding different things such as the shop with the cop and things like that. And so it's a wonderful thing. If you'd like to say a few words, that's great. Chief, if you'd like to expand on it, it'd be great.
What we're talking about is the Maryland Area Police Department's Community Services Fund. What that allows us to do is beyond the budget, give a little bit, that allows us from what the town gives us, allows us to give back to the community for the things such as our shop with the cop program. We've also bought Christmas dinners for underprivileged families. Some of the things that we've done expands on our outreach to the community and so forth. So it allows us to give a little bit more back to the community that we serve. So, and for that, we're extremely grateful for your generous gift and we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, I just want to thank the town of Mount Airy for having us in their town, for one, and that we are here to support the community, surrounding community when we can. Thank you.
We're going to do a quick photo op. Councilmember Demoter is a liaison with the Recycling and Sanitation Commission. So we'll get around here and...
How about if we get the front?
Yep.
We'll chase this check down.
We'll find this check. This check, I'll overhaul.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. So, we do have some commission members that are leaving. It's kind of a large audience, so I may miss you. So if they're here, we'll recognize them this month. If not, we'll get them next month. Donna Marie Needle, is she somewhere out there? I do not see her, but longtime chairman of Economic Development Commission, so we'll try to get her next month. If not, we'll send the certificate on. Keith Gailey's been on the Board of Appeals for years, and he is departing, but I don't see Keith out here either. And Mary Beth Worthington, is she out here? All right, so we're going to hit all these next month. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. We'll move into our Main Street Enhanced Traffic Safety Enforcement Initiative. And Corporal Brooks, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
And I don't know if this is a joint effort or if it's Corporal Brooks? All right, sounds good. All right, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Corporal JD Brooks of the Mount Airy Police Department. Just here to give an overview of the, and a summary of the enforcement objective results of the Main Street Safety Enhanced Traffic Safety Initiative. This is something that was undertaken beginning with the Main Street Safety Task Force that Mr. Demoter and the chief and myself, along with several other dedicated citizens in town, I know Ms. Galletti's been active as well. It's kind of a group effort, and I'm just the chosen one to come up here and answer your questions and present everything to you. The goal of the Main Street Enhanced Traffic Safety Initiative was to affect change in driving behavior through education and enforcement on Main Street. Traffic enforcement activities were conducted throughout the entire corridor in an effort to bring higher police visibility and to change bad driving behavior for the safety of motorists and pedestrians traveling on the Main Street corridor. Main Street is one of the essential transportation routes and a key asset for motorists and pedestrians traversing through the town. With a volume of over 4,000 vehicles on average per day, Main Street serves not only residents but also transient motorists traveling through town and visiting our many downtown amenities. Patrols were conducted twice per week in four-hour blocks. Officers were prohibited from working during times of adverse weather. Officers focused on speed enforcement while being alert and acting on any observed traffic violations. The enforcement was supplemented by a public awareness campaign that utilized signs posted at various locations throughout the town, reminding motorists to slow down while driving. Brochures were also created and handed out by officers to violators and citizens at various events. Officers working in the initiative were stopped by numerous citizens who live or walk in the area, offering their thanks and encouragement. From October 2022 through January 2023, officers worked a total of 24 days for a total of 96 hours. During these patrols, officers issued 58 citations, 74 warnings, and one safety equipment repair order, for a combined total that should be 132 citations, warnings, and seros, also known as safety equipment repair orders. In addition to the citations and warnings issued, officers made two traffic arrests and one criminal traffic arrest. While working in detail on January 10th of this year, at approximately 2:58 PM, an officer observed a vehicle committing a traffic violation on North Main Street near the Mount Airy Elementary School. His driving behavior was of great concern to the officers. It was during dismissal hours for the middle school. The officer immediately followed the vehicle for further observation, abducted a traffic stop of the vehicle at Buffalo Road and Summer Sweet Lane. After contacting the operator of the vehicle, the officer found the driver to be driving under the influence of alcohol and the possession of illegal narcotics. Driver was placed under arrest for these and other charges related to this stop. This is one example of how directed traffic enforcement details like this result in the added benefit of arrests for criminal behavior, in addition to taking an impaired driver who was driving in a school zone off of our streets. These types of combined results help to ensure the overall safety of our entire community. The Main Street Enhanced Safety Initiative is making a difference on Main Street and the surrounding community. The increased officer presence combined with the educational efforts and the ultimate stopping of violators has resulted in making Main Street corridor a safer area for motorists and pedestrians. The initiative has also shown that while speed surveys may indicate that speeds fall within acceptable standards, there is still value in conducting operations such as this. By contacting violators and educating them through a citation, warning, or educational brochure, we are spreading the idea that the town of Mount Airy is committed to ensuring the safety of the motorists and pedestrians that use Main Street as well as our other streets and roadways. These efforts work to provide our residents and visitors with an overall safe environment. So I'm going to turn to, what I have is my page three right now. It's a...
Yeah, you just want to highlight or...
Yeah, so I'm not going to dull you guys with all the numbers. I know Mr. Poyer had been very upfront about asking for numbers, just so, and everyone wants to see what they're, the bang they're getting for their buck. And I appreciate that. This bar graphs and charts, I have to give two thanks. One is to Scott Scarf, and the other is to Ms. Heather Smith downstairs. Their assistance with helping me in this is greatly appreciated, and they went above and beyond in helping me get this together, in addition to my other duties while working. Does anyone have any questions about anything they see on the bar graph?
I don't necessarily have any questions to related, to the graph or your report or anything like that, and it can be for Councilmember Demoter or yourself, whoever feels most comfortable. At what point do you feel that we should start to see a trend where the Safety Task Force Initiative, this program itself, when do you start to say that it's working?
The goals are being met.
The goals are being met.
Right.
So I notice, pardon me, I noticed that for at least the first four months...
Correct.
Right? So let's say, for example, I got pulled over in October and I go, okay, well, I shouldn't have done that. I made a mistake. I'm one of the 29. Hopefully, I wouldn't be one of the other ones, so looking at repeat offenders...
Correct.
Kind of looking at that. But when should I start to see really a downtrend to this data? Six months? Eight months? A year and a half? Do I have to spend approved taxpayer dollars for an overtime program? When people should really see a speed limit and say, okay, I really need to slow down. It goes from 35, it goes down to 25, especially when you enter the downtown zone. Out of the school zone, it goes back up to 35. Just a general question, because I don't really, I don't really know the answer, but I want...
Sure.
The, you guys are, have developed this, you guys have done a great job. This is not taking away from this, but I just want to, I just want to know.
Yes, sir. So I've done many of these in the past. I will tell you, this is the longest one I've ever undertaken. And to answer your, the long, the short answer to the long answer is, you really want to, you know, being, this being the first one done, this is almost like a trial and error period.
Okay.
These are going to be supported, and we talked about this last meeting, we're going to do follow-up speed surveys in the exact same spots where our signs were before.
Okay.
And what we're looking for is those overall average speeds. Okay? And in addition to that, we also look at the data of the violator speeds. So what we look at violator speeds are 10-plus.
Mm-hmm.
And we want to see a decrease in those categories overall. So you put signs north and south, on the south end of town here by the cemetery, I had them before, and the north end of town, north and southbound, up here in Dorsetown. Same spots, same time period, gather the same amount of data. It also show the increase, decrease, or the same amount of overall vehicle traffic, which is another concern raised by several residents, because they're getting tired of traffic out on 27. So that's just kind of the short answer to it.
Okay.
I know that we had discussed at the last task force meeting I attended, and I apologize for not attending where my family stuff come up, it was crazy. I would tend to say that the trend you're seeing from October, November, where it peaked in November, and then you start seeing a significant decrease here, and then a slight increase in January, your stats for January, February, and depending on how the weather cooperates in March, probably going to be significantly depressed just because of the weather. We didn't want guys out there wasting time sitting in their cars while it was raining. That's why they were prohibited working from inclement weather such as rain, temperature, or anything else that prohibited officer or traffic safety. So I would say that extending this, like trying to complete it through the end of this fiscal year, and then giving an overall data assessment and more of this, just to show the trends with your, you know, eyeballs are the best thing...
Yeah.
Would probably be the most beneficial.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
So first of all, thank you Corporal Brooks. I think Corporal Brooks and really the entire MAPD, they're kind of underselling themselves here. They really did an outstanding job in this effort, and they continue to do an outstanding job. This will go through the end of June.
Yes.
There's qualitative data and quantitative data. And so the qualitative data, which is in this report and what Officer Brooks says, you know, they're getting noticeable comments and positive comments from citizens who live on Main Street, who are visiting Main Street, who are visiting the businesses. So that's having a very positive effect.
Yes.
And we have a member, our last two Main Street Safety Task Force meetings, we went over the data, we discussed it, members commented on it. One of our members is a retired police officer, and he was quite pleased with the data. He said, "These numbers are really good numbers." If you look at the Traffic Enforcement Comparison Vehicle Stops graph, these percentages, 29%, 44%, 21%, 36% of stops on Main Street relative to their normal patrolling, those are really good numbers.
It's an...
They're making a lot of stops, and they're issuing citations where they need to issue citations. As Corporal Brooks said, there's the quantitative piece. And so ideally, and I did want to try and build this into the program, but it just didn't quite work out initially. But yes, the idea is to do a speed study at different locations, north end, south end, implement your program, and then months later, do speed studies again and see if you're having a noticeable impact. And I think we're going to do that, because this has been going on for four months, we've gone through some different seasons, and we discussed this. Probably in April-ish, we'll do some follow-up speed studies and see if there's a difference or not.
Correct.
The final comment is, this is the kind of program that you want to look for a decrease over time in speeders, but this is the kind of program, it's kind of like going to church in a way. You have to continue to do it to reinforce the traffic, good traffic behaviors. You need to be out there so that citizens know you're out there and there's enforcement going on. And that with the education piece that we built into this, we think has been making a difference. So, and then the very last point, people say, "Well, why are you doing this on Main Street?" And the famous bank robber Willie Sutton said, "Somebody asked him, 'Why do you rob banks?'" And he said, "'Because that's where the money is. You want to focus on Main Street because that's a key asset of the town. That's where your heaviest traffic volume is. You've got residential and business areas, and you've got transients coming through the town using that major artery. And that's where you're going to catch the bad actors, if you will, who are coming through town or making their way through town on the way to wherever they're going." And Officer Brooks highlighted that one example where they pulled somebody over and they had a drug violation and a DWI violation and such. So we think it's been a good effort. It's been, we think, well worth the money. I want to thank my fellow council members for supporting this. I lobbied for this in the last budget workshop session, and everybody supported it. And I think this cost the town $11,000 to $12,000, and I think it's been well worth the money spent. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
And just so you guys know, a little food for thought, we gave a presentation to the streets. The average time for a DUI in the town of Mount Airy is 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So it's not typically when the bar crowds letting out in downtown at 9:00, 10:00, 1 o'clock in the morning. It's 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So just, this is just proof positive that targeting that...
I just want to say thank you, and I want to point out, just to wrap the whole thing up, what we're learning on Main Street, we are applying, so I don't want everybody else who has speeders coming through their neighborhoods, because we all do, and some busy roads, Rising Ridge, over in Nottingham, what we're learning on Main Street, we're applying around town. And he's not just on Main Street, he's going to other places in town.
Correct.
So I just wanted to wrap that up, that it's not just Main Street. We're going to start expanding some of the activity to other people that complain about prospect, and we're on it. It's not that it's not on your radar.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Council President, last comment, just to follow up with Councilmember Galletti. I mean, that's, I echo those comments, and a lot of what we've been doing in the Main Street Safety Task Force has kind of been, kind of this incubator for trying some new approaches and ideas, and then if those work, we expand that broader to the whole town. So we've worked very closely with streets and roads and our educational campaigns, even designing the brochure. Those are being used throughout the town of Mount Airy. And as Councilmember Galletti said, where we need to do some surge enforcement, we can apply this program to different parts of the town where that's needed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right, next up in our agenda is a public comment. This is an opportunity for residents to come up and speak to the Town Council about whatever you wish, related to the agenda or not, and due to our agenda, if we could be respectful of our two-minute time limit, I would greatly appreciate it so that we can keep moving forward. So at this time, I open up the microphone. If you would like to come on up, come on up. I was going to say, there's no way. Stop messing with me.
Good evening. My name is Earl Henderson. I live at 803 Mary Go-Rangway. I have a major problem with respect to the ordinance saving the Flatiron Building. The one paragraph dealing with the funding is very vague. Basically says, "We're relying upon grants. Grants are not guaranteed. You may or may not get a grant. Grants are not free money. That's a myth. Somebody's paying for that grant." But I direct your attention to the language in this one paragraph that's very key regarding the funding. It says, "Otherwise, by means of funding in a manner to be recommended by the task force, and approved by the mayor and/or the council." What does that mean? To me, that sounds like the town of Mount Airy taxpayers are going to have one huge liability if you don't get the funding. I suggest this money could be spent in better man, in a better manner, like the police department. We need a police station. I understand the salaries of our police officers in Mount Airy is on the low side. I suggest that's where the money should be spent, not on a building that has seen its better days. I came from New Jersey, and the house I sold was a money pit. And I suggest to you that the Flatiron Building is a money pit, and you people are about to give the town a blank check, and I disagree with it completely.
Dixwans, I live on South Main Street. I'm also from New Jersey and happen to be talking about the same subject. This ordinance, it's up for adoption on the Flatiron Building. In addition to rescinding the motion to tear down the building, it does say that by law, the town of Mount Airy is committed to rehabilitate the Flatiron Building, and whatever money can be raised through grants, and you've just heard grants are not guaranteed, some are even 50/50, you're committing that you will take taxpayer money and make up the difference. That building could cost up to $2 to $3 million, is what I've heard. If you were, 50% of it came from grants, you're still talking $1 to $1.5 million of taxpayer money when you're looking for money to build a police station, which you don't have, which will probably be financed, because we don't have money for that. So I implore you not to pass this. I made a recommendation at the last meeting that said, "If you have a concern about a motion that said they're going to tear down the building, and that is an inhibitor to being, getting people interested in giving the town grants, I would simply suggest you pass the motion and you rescind that motion to tear it down and leave it at that until somebody can demonstrate how much money it's going to cost, where it's coming from, and what is the risk and liability to the taxpayer." Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Pyatt, Park Avenue. I'm here to talk about the MXD zoning, and I'm really summarizing the work of about a dozen volunteer researchers who have been working very diligently for the past year to come up with some of the issues that we felt were concerning, and we've dug into it. We had PIA's, quite a few things, and we've come to some conclusions. We've been trying to get legal counsel to represent us, and one of us would have to sell our house, so we decided to, you know, see what we can do. Normally, land use decisions are made by attorneys, and we have some fine representatives in our audience of these, you know, really top-notch fellows. While not an attorney, I have spent 24 years as a councilman, led both the Parks Department and the Planning Department, was a certified Planning Commission member, completed the training. Further, I served with the Carroll County Environmental Advisory Council for a dozen years and interacted with the Carroll County Planning Department. Previously, I worked for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, developing their regulations, and I took courses on how to write regulations that were normally given to law students, and at the Department of Energy on environmental regulations. We've come to some important conclusions, so a lot's happened in the last 10 years since I left the Planning Commission in 2012, and we had to do a lot of research.
Mr. Pyatt, can you please wrap up?
Okay.
Thank you.
The summary is, "An egregious mistake was made in developing the MXD zoning in August 2020. Just a month later, a similar law was struck down in Howard County. The Maryland Constitution bans a single developer or entity from writing a regulation to their benefit. That was the gist of the Howard County case. A Planning Commission member and attorney wrote a memo to this effect. We can debate whether the original developer, Kaz Brothers, did this. The preponderance evidence says this is so, and whether this applies to the new developer presence. Irrefutably, in reviewing all of the availability, available evidence, a mistake in zoning was made in the original development and enactment. A mistake can be the basis of not accepting or rejecting the current MXD zoning. The burden now falls on the legislative body, the council, to take the appropriate steps to correct it." Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mary Husshower. I live at 501 Westridge Drive, and I'm speaking in favor of saving the Flatiron. Never before have we had such a large and organized group of volunteers to help save this historical building by grant writing and fundraising and many other ways that they help. Not only that, but an amazing number of citizens want to save the building as well. I hear from people all the time to keep up the good work. Tearing down the building would cost money as well, as well as shoring up the surrounding slope and putting something in its place. I doubt there are many grants to tear down a building. This money would definitely be taxpayer money. Work with the citizens and volunteers to obtain grants and fundraise to save this important historic building. Please support saving this building.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Ron Thompson, Vanmar Associates. I'll try to be brief. Regarding ordinance 239, wellhead protection, this appears to have been coincidentally developed after the Beck Development Team revealed the well locations for the Beck Development. As presented, this ordinance disables the Beck Development since we're providing water for this development that the town does not have available. The provisions of this ordinance, including requiring wells to be 75,000 gallons per day or more, would eliminate all but one of our wells that we're proposing in the project, and it does not expressly allow linking of wells of lower yield to one water treatment facility. In addition, the ordinance increases the well radius above the Carroll County and MDE standard. radius above the Carroll County and MDE standard. That eliminates our largest potential well of 100,000 gallons per day. People say, although they say that it's consistent with the master plan recommendations, I'm not sure these would have been made by the Planning Commission if they knew that they were taking away developers' rights for the Beck property. And there's no data to support safety for any potential increase in the well radius. We ask that this ordinance be voted down. Ordinance 23-1 MXD, development of the MXD ordinance, contrary to what you've heard from Camel representatives, is that it was developed in a public collaborative process with the Planning Commission, public attended meetings as well as the developer. Yes, there were communications, but it was by all parties. It was thoroughly debated and discussed at the Planning Commission meetings, and many meetings were held to arrive with an ordinance that was praised by all town council members at that time. The current proposed ordinance has been developed by an individual that did not seek public input or to achieve a balance between public and private sector. We know best development occurs when all parties work together. Can underline that in caps. This proposed ordinance changes MXD from a mixed-use development to a standard residential development design with some commercial space.
Mr. Thompson, can you please wrap up?
I will. Couple more paragraphs, I'll be done. Thank you. The proposed ordinance did not receive a favorable majority recommendation from the Planning Commission when they had a 2-2-2 vote. Even though they were uncomfortable with the ordinance, the council representative as the author pushed this to return to the town council. We request, in the spirit of developing an excellent design for MXD, the town council send this back to the Planning Commission with the direction that the ordinance engage the developer, the town representatives, and the public to present changes to the MXD ordinance that can then be debated with the public input and receive a true Planning Commission favorable recommendation without town council representative overriding the Planning Commission. Please return this process to stability and collaboration rather than what Camel has said in our meetings. We took on Cas Brothers, and we'll take you on next. We want you to go away. That's not a way to work collaboratively on a project. That goes the same for your proposed ordinance 23-8, adequate public facilities. This goes to the Planning Commission tonight. We would request that, rather than what happened at the last meeting, that this be publicly debated and input allowed by the private sector so that we can again achieve the things that we are trying to achieve for an excellent design. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, next time, just a simple yes will do, okay? Thank you.
Counsel, thank you. I'm Larry Vallée from Mount Airy. I'd just like to say that I'm in support of the preservation of the Flatiron. And I'd like to express that to preserve the building is more than just an expenditure of town funds. It's an investment in Main Street. This past two weeks, I've been applying for several grants to lean about $150,000 to move to the next phase, which is the design development schematic and construction document phase. And the grants I'm applying for are specific to that design. And these applications are not done in the dark. I've done them in consultation with pro bono services provided by expert architects who've informed and provided cost estimates for that. We've done that in consultation with Preservation Maryland, who's also steered us towards other available grants during the progress of any preservation attempt that we attempt to make. There are other funds out there for the actual construction of this type of work that was identified on the structural assessment, the engineering assessment. There's grants that are available, which are the Strategic Demolition Grants, the Community Legacy Grants, the Rural Maryland Council Property Investment Fund, and the Maryland Heritage Area Grant. Those four grants total over $1 million alone. And that wouldn't include the Mount Airy's contribution, which anywhere from a variety of those grants is either 50/50 or 10% match. So the application to grants and taking this step on a phase-based approach to rehabilitate this building, I think is instrumental to a revitalization of Main Street. It provides and keeps a lot of town history. We have a lot of momentum behind this initiative, not just by town citizens, by experts. To date, I remind the town council, we've had pro bono services to the tune of $17,000 provided by SGH Engineering, our own town G&amp;M Engineering, who's provided surveys, and over 815 labor hours provided by volunteers at the task force. So with that, I'd just like to say I wish for your vote to do what we can to preserve the Flatiron.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Warren Kibler, the owner of Kibler Construction. I was the low bidder on bid day for the roundabout. We was notified that the next day that apparently the other bidder, Halton, was now the low bidder because of some changes in their bid form. I just wanted to bring to your attention that that bid form had over 21 irregularities. There was asterisks on the bid form that is a no-no with the state highway or any other industry. There's two items that was never filled out on the bid form. It was never acknowledged. There was addendums that it's clearly noted on the addendum that you have to acknowledge it. There's an addendum that wasn't acknowledged. There's no corporate seal. There's no other industry or group that would approve a bid with a bid form that is so, for lack of words, you know, that's not complete. We've had jobs thrown out for just one of those missing. So I just ask that the council reconsider.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Clark Wagner, Pleasants Development. I'll just be brief. Commenting on ordinance 23-1 and 23-9, the MXD and the wellhead protection ordinances. Clearly, I think everyone in the room knows these are targeted at the Beck property. And if adopted as written, it really backs us up to a cliff. We're not comfortable. Having said that, I think we can work towards a middle ground if the town is willing to work with us. We haven't heard that thus far. A cooperative collaboration, much like a charrette, would be a nice thing to have with respect to these two ordinances. Certainly a two-way street. A charrette is a two-way street, two-way communication, and that's all we're asking for. So we welcome the opportunity to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. I haven't started your timer.
I'll get it right here sometime. Maybe I ought to put my glasses on. Good evening.
Good evening.
Dave Power Sox, 24 North Court Street, Westminster, Maryland. I'm gonna be, I have been here. I've heard Mr. Thompson's comments and Mr. Wagner's comments, and I would incorporate them with my arm. I agree with him. I want to share a couple of comments about the drafts themselves that are before you. We were here about a month ago when I reminded Mr. Demoter of comments that he'd made prior to that time about the water proposal that had been previously submitted and defeated. It's back again. Same basic proposal. The system is working. Words to those effect are what Mr. Demoter said at that time. There's no indication of anything, an emergency situation. There's no data that's been published or released to anyone, I don't believe, to show any compelling need to change the watershed protection or wellhead protection standards. It's a solution in search of a problem, as an expert told you before. With regard to the open space ordinance, one thing I will ask you to consider is that the land use article of the Antitated Code of Maryland makes the Planning Commission, it confers the authority on them to set the manner in which they conduct their business. It already provides them the tools that they need to make various considerations. I fear that what this is, is a heavy-handed effort for some at the council level maybe, to usurp that authority from the Planning Commission, which is clearly left in the Planning Commission's hands. As far as the MXD is concerned, I'm gonna echo that it's here before you because of a 2-2-2 vote of your seven-member Planning Commissioner, one not there. It did not even get a favorable recommendation from one-third of the members of your Planning Commission. Not even a third, yes.
Thank you.
I would suggest that you take Mr. Wagner at his suggestion and go back and try to sort this out with the Planning Commission, along with the other issues with these various ordinances. You know, it seems I keep hearing this, we're not supposed to talk about the Beck property in connection with these various ordinances. These keep seeming to be coming at them. We're playing the emperor's new clothes if we don't realize that these are targeted measures. And I will also say for Mr. Pyatt's sake, I reviewed Howard County versus McNair, I think it is, again this weekend, McLean. And what happened in August of 2020 was nothing like the factual situation in that case in Howard County that he referred to. It is eerily much more similar, the McLean case, which was determined to be an improper use of legislative authority, eerily similar to what this council's being asked to do now repeatedly with resurgently submitted bills and legislation that are defeated, they're brought back based on no data whatsoever, and they're targeted at a individual property or project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Higwood, 1808 South Main Street. I wanted to speak on a couple of things. The Flatiron Building, it's been talked about a lot. I agree with a couple of the other statements people were talking about with the development of downtown and how it affects, you know, the growth and everything. But I have been looking at it from a different view of, you know, just expanding upon the view of downtown and, you know, trying to improve it. I see, as the vision plan stated, like in 2019, that the Flatiron was one of the main issues with revitalization and with trying to design downtown. I think once that gets cleaned up and it gets redeveloped and designed nicely, and it's in a good working order, and it's got, you know, plazas and everything around it, I think what that does is it kind of opens up the picture for downtown to be able to get more grants or different kind of funding and different ideas for like the cold storage and for different things that are further down the road. It's like a keystone to expanding upon other aspects of it and kind of cleaning up, you know, like we talked about with, you know, east and west side of Main Street and stuff like that. So I'm in favor of, you know, doing that. The other point that other people have talked about is that we can also bury utilities at the same time. We can bring utilities in different areas. Like, there's a few different aspects of it that's not just the building. It's the surrounding area. It's the plaza. It's, you know, utilities. It's a whole bunch of different things going on right there. So I just encourage you to, you know, think about those things as you vote for them. So the other thing about the wells, I have mixed feelings about it because looking at it scientifically, it's like expanding 200 feet out for the wells, there's no basis that I can see on that. But is my time up? But the, and it's not a very popular opinion for a lot of people, but it does seem like it's being targeted to one area. But, you know, 100 feet is kind of the standard of the state of Maryland and the counties and everything. For us to expand it to 200, I really want to see some, like, evidence of why that proposal is for what it is. Like, bring forth some information more why it should be like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move through our agenda. Councilmember Demoter asked me before the meeting if he could do a quick reading of an email, and then we'll move on to the approval of the council meeting minutes.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I want to read an email I received from a citizen. And this citizen had intended on being here this evening, but they're having some health issues. So I wanted to share this for everyone's consideration. "Councilmen, we have followed the Flatiron Building scenario. We are 100% behind your efforts to protect the taxpayers' voice and money. We have lived in Mount Airy for nine years, and we love this town. We are seniors, and the only mistake we made is not discovering the town sooner. Personally, I have had two horror events that happened to me due to the unsafe narrow street condition next to the Flatiron Building since I lived here. I own a pickup truck, and twice I had to replace my right-side view mirrors to avoid an accident with an oncoming vehicle. And I moved to the right and knocked off the mirrors. No one paid for this but me, rather than put in an insurance claim, which drives up the cost of my insurance. We support your position on not using taxpayer money before rectifying our need for a future police department building. And we should be looking into supporting a new community center. Not all of our young people play organized sports. The early teens and the older teens age who do not play sports will need guidance also. Mr. Demoter, we live in the Nottingham community. And as this proposed Flatiron Building is being pushed by their task force, we are stepping forward to offer any help we can to support your position on not using the taxpayers' money for a wasteful endeavor like this." So I just want you to incorporate that into your thinking as council members and fellow citizens. And this isn't the only email I've received. Many other emails like this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move into the approval of the council meeting minutes and closed meeting minutes. February 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes, February 2023 Public Hearing Meeting Minutes, Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-3, the blackout period during election. January 2023, I apologize, closed meeting minutes. This is 3-305B, subsection 3, to consider acquisition of real property subject to PFAS. I'll make a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mundur, seconds.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes, to add something. Is this the right time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The main meeting minutes from February 6, council meeting, under presentations. It says, "Town Administrator Warrington presented a PFAS report. Nicole Moon commented." I would like to add, "Councilmember Demoter commented." Because I recall, I added some, I made some comments about the need for an implementation plan per the MDE memo that said our town should be developing such a plan.
That's fine. And I think Ms. Moon has been here many of times. I think her first name is misspelled as well.
So what's that?
If I'm mistaken. But, is it? Okay. We'll amend the minutes based on Councilmember Demoter's comments. All those in favor of the amended minutes and the council meeting minutes and the closed meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we'll move to our chief's report for the Mount Airy Police Department.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Rees with the Mount Airy Police Department's monthly report. Starting out with meetings and trainings attended. February 16th, I attended a meeting with the Carroll County State's Attorney's Office and other Carroll County law enforcement executives regarding Brady Giglio policies and procedures to be implemented by the State's Attorney's Office, which have impacted the police departments. We were provided with a draft MOU, which is currently under review. I believe I sent a copy to the mayor and the town administrator as well. And I believe our town attorney is also working with Chief Hess up in Manchester on this as well. So it's something forthcoming, we'll have an MOU in the future to deal with that. February 23rd, I attended a meeting with the Frederick County Administrative Charging Committee in Frederick City. Community outreach, there's nothing to report for the month of February. Calls for service, we handled 423 calls for service during the month of February. This is a little bit of a decrease in calls for service in comparison with January and a large, bigger decrease in calls for service from the comparison of February in 2022. Traffic enforcement, we had 80 traffic stops. We issued 49 traffic citations, 86 warnings, nine safety equipment repair orders. We made one DUI arrest and five other traffic arrests. Criminal enforcement, we made three criminal arrests during the month. Significant incidents within the town. We did have a rash of two vehicle thefts from the area, from businesses in the area. One occurred on Backacre Circle, and the other occurred over on North Main Street. Both vehicles were recovered. There was also a third vehicle that was stolen from another jurisdiction that was abandoned on Horpell Drive. In addition to that, we had a couple of different thefts from vehicles. So the moral of that is to lock your vehicles, make sure they're secure, keep your valuables out of sight, and take the time to eliminate the opportunity to commit a crime. During the month, we also had several other investigations. We had group A offenses that occurred, 17 group A offenses, two assaults, three destructions of property, three narcotics violations, one fraud, seven larceny thefts, and again we had the motor vehicle thefts. Year-to-date, we have a total of 57 group A offenses. Group B offenses for the month, we had four, and that was one DUI arrest, one family offense, nonviolent, and two other, all other offenses. Year-to-date, group B offenses total was 12. During the month of January, or I'm sorry, during the month of February, there was no opioid-related overdoses reported in the town. And that will be the monthly reports. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, Captain Rolf with the Civil Air Patrol.
Good evening, Captain.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, council members. This is our report for February 2023. Under mission significant activities, the squadron is providing significant support to a large-scale cadet encampment that's being held over several weekends during the winter period. Between students and our staff members, we actually, about half our squadron's involved in that, so that's actually consuming a lot of our bandwidth these last couple of months. Under community support, several members supported the recovery of wreaths in Pine Grove Cemetery as part of the Wreaths Across America, so that was the closeout of that event. Also want to say publicly thank you to the Lance Corporal Robert Dean detachment and the Marine Corps League for their generous donation and certification of appreciation to present to the squadron for that event. Qualifications and achievements, we had one member completing an advanced CAP Squadron Leadership Course, and we had one member complete a Wilderness First Aid Course, further expanding our, our emergency services capabilities. Under significant training, which I really didn't have a better place to put this, we've been testing a new phone application, which provides some real-time alerts on any type of emergency services responses in the areas. On February 8th, we received an alert of a plane crash about two miles outside of town. We never received any kind of official notification, and to be honest, I was never able to verify through any other independent source that this crash actually occurred. However, we were able to use this as a training event and provided a, essentially a recall for our personnel to be able to respond. And we actually successfully had our entire ground team ready to go and be prepared to deploy within 90 minutes. Flight time, we had one cadet actually completed four orientation flights all by herself. And we had one new cadet join the squadron in February. Operational status, we remain fully mission capable and ready, and as you can see, actually ready to go in a moment's notice if we need to. And on the horizon, we'll be continuing our support for the winter encampment with our final weekend coming up in a couple of weeks. And a representative of the squadron will be joining some town leadership as a tour of the nearby fertilizer plant to review any kind of potential mishap and response plans associated with that. Finally, squadron will be supporting Air National Guard in our annual kitchen duty that we support the group up there, and we'll be participating in search and rescue exercise later this month. Depending on your questions, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Captain, for your time tonight. I appreciate it. Are there any questions? All right, appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thanks, sir.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move into new business. First up, under new business is the amendment to the Town's ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act Projects Program. This was presented to you by David Warrington, who just so gentlemanly walks in.
Good timing.
I like it. David, do you want to just give us a overview and what's being changed?
Right. The only thing that really has changed is we have added another category, which is number 10, water treatment plant laboratory upgrade. With all the PFAS, we took a peek at some of our facilities, and the town engineer showed us that our water lab is antiquated at best and needs to be upgraded. We did check with the U.S. Treasury as to whether or not this fell under the ARPA funding, which it did. So we moved some money, and I think it was from Manholes, down to its $140,000, and we will then upgrade. With passage of this amended plan, we would upgrade our lab to bring it into the 2022, 23.
What, between numbers one through nine, what, did you need to take money and borrow it to come up with the 140 somewhere else? Or, because I know with, with a program like this, you have to spend all the dollars. So where, where did the 140 come from?
Our initial numbers, they were just estimates? I don't know what they were. I think number three, the 15-inch water main might have also dropped.
Right.
I'm sorry, I don't have my cheat sheet in front of me. But I think number three, number four, those numbers came down. And these are based on, a lot of these are based on actuals, where, where we are today.
Okay.
The 15-inch water main, we've done all the line, and we're going to do on that, that main, so there's.
Oh, is that done?
That one is complete.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what the green font meant?
Well, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, maybe it's not close enough. So, and then the smaller sewer system repair, we just have one more line that we line, that needs to be lined, and.
Is that number five?
That's number six.
Six, okay, thank you.
And that amount is estimated in that 710, so we subtracted, I think, a little bit out of that as well.
Okay.
But it was just based on actuals where we are today.
Okay, fantastic. And my last question before I open it up to anybody else. The treatment plant upgrade, does that have anything to do with the nitrate program that I'm going to see later, or is that, are those two separate things?
Those are two separate things.
Okay.
Yeah, the treatment plant upgrade, that was just a broad look at, at our size of our 1.2 million gallon sewer plant.
Okay.
And just to see where that might go in the future. And it's just a little bit of knowledge for us to have to know approximately what kind of cost we're going to be looking at.
Okay.
Eventually.
All right, thank you. If anybody else has any comments or questions?
I do, thank you. First set of questions were answered, which is where's the money coming from out of the rest of the projects? Second question is, it says the benefit is to allow staff to better test and review the water being processed. How's it going to better test and review the water being processed? What, what is tested and reviewed at this lab? What is the need?
So, so this is at the waste share of the plant.
Uh huh.
The new lab. This lab was put in in 1989, I think it was, and has no upgrades, countertops, I mean, everything, the cabinets, everything is like rusting and, and, you know, it's, it's just the hood for the, you know, the ventilation, just a little bit of everything, it just makes sense just to redo a full rehab of that, of that building. We're also, the operators down there would like to get rid of the breezeway that separates that from the office. So we're thinking that, maybe closing that off, put a doorway, taking out a wall that's not, not electric, like doing some upgrades.
Okay. So you're not talking about improving or enhancing the testing methodologies and capabilities? You're talking about improving the physical structure of the building? That's what I hear you saying.
Not just the structure, but all the lab equipment as well. But part of this, of the design would be looking into if there are improved methods. We don't have any that we're targeting to go to a new technology.
Okay.
Which is just an answer.
So, so the ARPA money will fund improvements to structures and building structures? Does it?
Yeah, I, I sent it to them and got their.
Let me ask you this, would ARPA money, could ARPA money have been used to build the police station?
No.
Okay.
The proper, proper use of this is for the lab.
Water and sewer, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One quick comment. I have been to that lab and that office area, so I, if you haven't been there, you guys should really go down and check it out. I'm 100% behind this because I know they're cramped in there, they need more, more room for their equipment and to be able to do the proper testing. So we're not, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not just renovating to give them a nice space to hang out in. This is a serious lab where they're testing things, and it, and it, you're telling me it hasn't been upgraded in 34 years? That should scare everybody, I'm sorry. So thank you for doing the work you did to reappropriate this appropriately with the money.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right, next on our agenda is the bond release for Brittany Manor at Twin Arch Village. I think because it was already appropriated.
Yeah, I don't think so. Appropriate, right?
Okay. I mean, there's no harm, like, we can do it now.
Yeah, it wouldn't harm.
Yeah, there's no harm in it, right?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, you have one aye.
One aye, all right.
There's no harm.
All right. Next is the bond release, Brittany Manor at Twin Arch Village, section five, PWA. Barney, they're looking for a reduction to 825,682.50.
Where did you get that number?
Front page.
No, so go over to the right of the, of the chart, release recommended, come to the bottom of that, that lower number on the right, far right.
1 million?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the new bond will be the 825,000? That's on the front, front page, Barney?
That, that would be the remaining.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So the reduction, release, 1,171,725. And this is from Brittany Manor, leaving a balance of 825,682.50. All right, does anyone have any questions for the engineer?
Everything seems to be going on okay over there? I mean, they're meeting their requirements and?
Yeah, in, in fact, what we're holding on the sewer line, they were just fixing, getting that fixed last week, and, and they're cleaning, cleaning everything up, repaving. They had to dig down about 20 feet to get to a sewer line to repair.
Okay.
So, yep.
And they've worked well with us on any, you know, changes, not challenges, but, you know, questions, comments that we've had for them and things of that nature, the developer?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think the next bond release, we'll, we'll be able to release everything but the 10%.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, fantastic. All those in favor of the recommended release of 1,171,725, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the recommendation of award for South Main Street Roundabout Project. We actually heard Kibler Construction.
Kibler was the losing bidder?
No, I know, but this is all about the same thing.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure, was this whole, was this whole packet out on the table? Or was it, or are we only, only the ones getting this whole packet? I don't, Holly, do you know?
I think that whole packet that was put in your packet?
Yes.
I think that was put out on the table.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make it public, just for everything. So as the engineer sent an email to everyone talking about some of the conflicts that, that have happened with this bid, Barney, unless you, you have anything, I was just going to open it up for questions from the council. Did you have anything? I mean, the low, after seeing everything and, and reading your report, technically, well, I don't know technically is the right word, but the recommendation from the town is Hamilton Site Construction, or HSC, be awarded the project in 1,559,184.83 with a 5% contingency. My only question was, does that amount include the 5%? Or when we do the budget for 24, do we need to include the 5% contingency?
Yeah, so I would award it for that amount, and then the 5% would, just for the budget. So if.
So that would need to be?
Only if it goes, for some reason, the quantities are more than what the engineer estimated, then, then we'd have a little contingency.
All right. So there's, there's quite a little debate here. So if any other council members have any questions before I continue?
Sure. I have some questions.
Before?
So, help me understand, as Council President Poyer said, it sounds like the, the adjusted award to HSC is 1,559,184.83, but then there's this contingency of 5%. And the question is, it, it sounded by reading this that the contingency, the extra amount is kind of likely to be needed. So if you add the contingency 5% amount to the 1,559 amount, suddenly now you are above the Kibler estimate. So did you factor that in?
Yeah, so to explain it, on the bid form, the engineers' estimates were all put in for 70 or 80 items, okay? They had to fill in the unit costs, and then they are supposed to take the engineer's estimate multiplied by the unit cost to get the extended price. Hamilton had 16 items that they wanted to point out to the town that they think the quantities are higher than the engineer's estimates. And understand that this is just a unit price contract. It is not a lump sum, so whatever the quantities come in, they are going to be what they are. So whether Kibler or Hamilton or anybody else was going to install it, the quantities are going to be what they are. So what happened was because they, and they put a note, and they're saying that they adjusted quantities where they put an asterisk, and it was 16 items. And so we said, this is not an apples to oranges, I mean, it's apples to oranges bid, not apples to apples bid. So we didn't see any reason for throwing out the bid. It's an irregularity. We do reserve the right to waive any irregularities in a bid. And we were still looking at, because we had five qualified bidders, we would have happily awarded to any of them. But we want to be fair in the process of making sure that who is the true low bidder is actually who we're going to get. Because if, if the quantities are higher that Hamilton is, is throwing out there, we, if Kibler won the bid, they would be even higher than Hamilton's cost at that, that point. And so I've done the math, we've gone through all of it, whether it was the engineer's estimate bid, quantities, or Hamilton's quantities, that Hamilton is still the low bidder. that Hamilton is still the low bidder in both cases. So, you know, it's clear to me that's the low bidder, right? Even though when the, the, we read the bids aloud, all we looked at was the bottom line number. And because Hamilton was pricing on higher quantities, their bid was higher.
Okay. I do have some.
That's why at the bid time, it was apparent low bidder was Kibler. But we did say at the bid opening that we will review these, then make a recommendation. And so that's, that's what happened.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have some other questions, but they're of a different vein, so I don't want to interrupt the, the conversation flow. I, I would just like to ask a question at the end, if I could.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reminder, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
So with the, with the five, with the 5%, which ends up being 72,000. So in '24, we're going to have to add 72,000 with that potentially 5%. That would put Hamilton's probably grand total at 1.6 million. 1.637 is what I, is what I, what I'm ending up with a number. Do you, pardon me? Okay, good. I'm glad we can all do math. What, what was Kibler's final number? Is it 1.580?
That, that was, so they, so the engineer's estimated quantities are what you use to, at the given unit prices to come up with, you know, the fair price, apple, apples, apples price. All we did is we took Hamilton's and put it at the engineer's estimated values times their unit bid prices. Came up with a new and adjusted extended price. So now we're looking at the same quantities. And so, yeah, Kibler had already used the engineer's estimated quantities. So when we used Hamilton's, they came in about 30,000 less.
Okay. Typically, when, and, and I'm not saying, I'll, I'll use the word typically. Typically, when we get, when we get bid, there's always a chart of all of the bidders. Because if the council feels it necessary to use something else, of course, typically, we go, I think, with, with your recommendation. You work with all of these, these companies and, and you've been doing this long enough and we, we trust the, we trust the process. But on this one, in this, in this packet, we don't have any of the other, any of the other bids to look at. Now we're only looking at Kibler and we're looking at Hamilton. Are the other numbers so far outstretched that they weren't even up for consideration? Or are they all relatively ballpark?
Yeah. So, so that chart is, is this here. It was pretty extensive. I didn't know.
That's fine. So you're, you're giving me.
I can give you those prices.
Yeah. So without going through all of that, Kibler, Kibler has 1.580. Hamilton, sorry, I have to turn the page. Hamilton has 1.559.
Correct.
What's another company?
So the next lowest was CJ Miller at 1.856. And then the next lowest was Bright Construction at 1.918. And the highest bid was Ross Contracting at 2.172. Rounded figures.
No, you're fine.
Right.
Right. We're not, at this point in millions, we're not counting pennies.
Right.
That's fair enough to say. You know, I don't, I don't, I, to be honest, I don't, I don't know how I feel about this and, and I, I would hate to delay this project for a motion to say, rebid it and be, if Kibler's not understanding something, if Hamilton's not understanding something, if the other, maybe just contact those five and rebid it. But there's a lot of paperwork for a bid that, you know, I, I feel like should have been pretty straightforward, but it's a traffic circle and it's almost $2 million. So I don't know. That's, those are my comments.
If I can respond to that?
Sure.
So there wasn't anything that they didn't understand? Again, Hamilton was just trying to give a little extra, if you will, of trying to show, hey, you might want to look at these quantities instead rather than, rather than the other. I agree, they should have used the engineer's estimates on the bid form, but the.
Well, that sounds like a misunderstanding, like he didn't understand. He, he upped his estimates so that they, it would provide a cushion, so that when costs were, were over, that he could then say, listen, I predicted this amount. And, and I lost, that's fine, but I predicted maybe he's being on the safe side. And Kibler being a low bidder was like, hey, I think I can actually do this project for 1.580. I, I don't need 5%. I don't need the other materials and this is what I can do the project for because this is what I know. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just a storyteller.
If the engineer's estimated quantities are, are good.
Yeah.
We won't need the 5%. But a project like this, I mean, 5% contingency should be probably built into it regardless. You know, there's always unknowns that you might run into or that sort of thing.
Let, let me ask one more thing. Have you worked with Kibler before?
Yes.
What have they done?
We've done projects with, with everybody on, on this list. Kibler, I mean, CJ Miller, they've done a lot of paving in town.
Right. I.
They've also done some pipe work for us in town.
Okay. Kibler specifically?
Kibler, we had two projects with them. They did the East West Pond, so two recent projects, and also the, the Boardwalk.
How, how have their estimates been for those projects? Have they gone over, like, we need to do a budget amendment, or have they been okay?
Well, yeah. Well, I mean, we've had two or three budget amendments for each one, but it wasn't like tremendous amounts.
Not 5%, 72,000 dollars?
Probably with, no, probably less than 5%.
I don't mean to be quizzing you, but like, I'm going to award somebody a, a 1.6 million dollar project. I need to, sorry, I need to quiz you. I apologize. Okay. That's all I have. Councilwoman Reed or, before I turn it back over to Councilmember Demoter? Councilwoman Gillette, go ahead.
You said Reed. I was waiting.
Uh, Reed and then, yes, sorry.
So I'm reading the code section 26-9, lowest responsible bidder. So it appears as though all the bidders were responsible in what they did and what they gave you, and it ties in with the engineering estimates. So you're comfortable with this bidder? And we've done projects with the lowest bidder?
Yes.
Okay. So is there any reason why, and this is my project, because we know that it's a huge safety issue down there? We know that's a mess down there. So to delay it is a safety problem and we all talk about safety up here. So I'd be concerned delaying anything. If we have a bid and it fits in the code section 26-9, lowest responsible bidder, do you see any reason why we should not go with that bid?
I, I don't see any reason why.
And you're comfortable with it?
Yes. And I, I agree with you on the schedule. I mean, it's going to be a six-month project. It's going to be at least a month before we actually get them started. And I just don't want to be pushing winter time where that's a, like a highly visible area, working on a, working on the road there where it gets kind of busy.
So feasibly, if we get them going in a month, that would be April, May, June, July, August. Hopefully, you could have it done before all the buses start running and school gets back in, when we're really torn up over there in the summer months, unless we delay it.
It'd be, for sure, if we delay it, then we'd, we'd definitely be in that school.
So I don't see any reason, I get what you're saying and thank you for asking those questions, Council President, because we do want to be fiscally responsible when we make this decision. But I think we rely, this legislative body does rely heavily on our staff, which we have all said, we have fantastic staff. So thank you for doing this and I have 100% confidence in our staff.
Councilmember Demoter?
Yeah. So my, my questions are a little different vein. And I know that we've discussed this many, many times and we've approved things at each sequential stage. But we're at the point now where we're really to, ready to push the button and make this happen. So I just want to be reminded, first of all, the memo says, "The project will address the failed intersection of Ridge Side Drive." Was this a failed intersection before Chick-fil-A or is it caused by Chick-fil-A? Now, I don't always say caused, that's the wrong word. Was it exacerbated by the additions of different businesses?
So again, going all the way back to our Maryland 27 corridor study. They studied, I think, nine intersections along 27, but they also studied about 20 other intersections. Ridge Side Drive at Main Street is one of them. And what they found was, we had an already failing intersection where coming out of Ridge Side Drive headed southbound, making a left onto Main Street, it got backed up at times. And when we were talking about adding the Chick-fil-A, everybody knows that Chick-fil-A is more than the average restaurant, like a fast food restaurant as far as the amount of traffic. So that's what the failing movement was in that intersection. So we eliminated the left turn lane, knowing that Phase 2 would be sending them around the circle.
Okay. My, my next question is really, I want to be sure that there's a solid concurrence chain on this project. I know that this has been discussed in different commissions. We've had informal concurrences that this project is supported. But do we have a piece of paper that has the, has the formal concurrence from the Streets and Roads Commission Chairperson, the Planning Commission Chairperson, et cetera? What I'm looking for here is, oh, and the MAPD. So for example, I, I want to know, and I want it on paper, that our MAPD, they're the ones that are going to have to enforce traffic. Officer Brooks is a traffic safety expert. I want to know from them that they concur on the design and they think that design is going to work for the town in terms of their expertise in traffic enforcement and flow and that kind of a thing. And then, for example, from the Planning Commission, is this traffic circle being designed in a way that will support additional potential growth on that corner of the road? So is it being designed in a way that will accommodate what might be coming in the future? Or is it not a good design for that? So what I would like to see, if we don't have it, I'd like to see a memorandum that comes along with this that says, here's the project. The purpose of this project is to address the failed intersection at Ridge Side Drive, gives that detail. And then it says, the appropriate commissions of the town and Mount Airy and the MAPD concur on the design of this project and approve its execution. I would like to see that piece of paper. Do, do we have anything in writing from, from those commissions that shows formal concurrence on this project?
So we don't normally get a written or have a summarized sign-off sheet for that type of project? That's, if you want to introduce that, that's something new. We haven't done that in the past.
And I don't see our, I'm sorry.
But that doesn't mean that the commission, some commissions haven't reviewed it. I know Streets and Roads has reviewed it a couple of times.
Yeah, I want to add to that really quick. Streets and Roads has been working with town staff for two years now, since before, right before we found out Chick-fil-A was going in and we hadn't been consulted on the already failing intersections all the way around in the area, in front of Anita's failing. All the ones we're sending the traffic to, Walmart failing. So Streets and Roads has been involved and has recommended to continue with what staff is doing. Did we write a formal memorandum? No. Commissions don't typically do that. That's why we have our meetings. That's why they're public. That's why we have our minutes and our records, that we have supported staff from day one, step one in the process, and we've seen the plans from day one.
Yeah, I just, I just.
Have been reviewed at Streets and Roads. So if you, if you go back two years, probably, you can start looking at our minutes and our meetings and especially during COVID, when they were televised and recorded, that we did see it. We went through it in depth. And, and also too, I believe, presented it when I did the Streets and Roads presentation at the planning meeting for the master plan.
Okay. I, I understand all that. I, I, I don't see our MAPD folks here, but that was a, a question for them to confirm. I, I would, I would like to see that sort of documentation. This is a major, major project, a high-dollar project. And I would be more comfortable with something that has on record, you know, when we're ready to push the button, that everybody agrees, this is a good design and it's going to meet the needs of the town now and the future. That would be, that would be needed for me to approve this tonight. Or it would need to be a condition of approval for me tonight.
Right. I will say, all future developments that might be in and around that area, we're taking in consideration for that. So I mean, that's, if that means anything.
All right. Thank you very much.
The only thing I will add is I have full faith in staff, that you did your due diligence and it was a fair bidding process. As a resident in that area, I don't want to see this delayed because for us, it is a huge safety issue. So I, I'm perfectly comfortable voting tonight.
I have a number of residents that say the same thing.
And Lee's here as well. He can confirm. And the other thing I want to mention is, design has already been done. We've spent a ton of money on design. What we're getting is the best product that the engineers feel we can get.
Go ahead.
I was, quick questions to Barney here, just one and a comment. The, I guess the prices that were used in the bid for the quantities, were they the same for both? Like, you know, a ton of this costs X, a ton of something else costs the same price?
So that's what they had to fill in. There's like, again, 70 or 80 items. They have to fill in that unit cost. That's what the bid was, is filling in those unit costs.
Okay.
And, and the other is just a summary of what, you know, if you do the math.
And you use their numbers when you did the calculation for the bids? Like, when you said like, Kibler's bid based on HSC quantities and vice versa, you used their price per unit number?
Yeah. So, so they did, they did, they actually do the math themselves.
Okay.
Have an extended price for each line item and then they do a sum. What we do is we take every unit cost, the engineer's estimate, and we put it into an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
And we do the math through formulas and we find that everything matches up. We have had other projects where numbers don't match up. And so we've had to go back to bidders and try to figure out what's going on.
Okay. So this was an unusual circumstance, per se?
It's not that unusual. It's different, but it's, it's not that unusual.
Okay. And I would like to second Councilwoman Gillette's read and my comment would be also that they do due diligence in that and the design. And I've checked with Barney on numerous occasions, because I do see there's some other potential developments down that way. And I have always asked him, is this taken into consideration, those coming online later? And he has always said yes. So I do believe that any future projects have been taken into consideration and the design has accounted for the, for them. So I'm good on voting on this tonight to Council President.
All right. Town staff recommends Hamilton Site Construction in the amount of 1,559,184.83 be awarded to Hamilton Site Construction. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Amendment? Is this the right time to make an amendment?
We already started the vote. So you can either abstain or say nay.
Okay.
What would, nay or abstain?
I would say nay. I, I wanted, I wanted, I was simply going to suggest that the memo include a paragraph that speaks to the fact that the commissions and the town concur on the design. But if that can't get in there, then my vote's a nay.
All right. For, for one. You got it? Cool. Sorry, councilmember. Next up is the approval for Water Station 4 Nitrate Removal System Replacement. This is to replace the water station number four in the amount of 222,157 dollars. And is that 50 cents to, is that 50? Not five, right?
It is 50 cents.
Okay.
Sorry.
Not that I'm worried about cents, but, okay. For, mainly for Katie's purposes over there. To Stoner Enterprises Incorporated. Barney, did you have any comments?
No. I, I mean, just pointing out that there was only a single bid on this project.
Okay.
We did review it. We did look at costs and find it to be reasonable.
Okay.
So we would. So, we would recommend moving forward with it.
Okay. And there is a note, we're going to do $150,000 now and then for the 2024 budget, I guess we'll put a line item, we'll need to do an additional $72,024.
Right.
Sounds good. All right. Any other comments by council members?
I have a quick question. Why is station number four the only one that needs nitrate removal?
So, the MCL is 10 parts per million and that's the only one where the raw water is anywhere close to that. So, it's on both wells that serve that station, which is wells eight and 10. But, yeah, the others are well below.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did that have anything to do with, is it, nitrate is more, I don't know, in my experience, more like long fertilizer chemicals, those types of things? Is there any reason for that seeping going into those particular wells or?
It just could be the farms, the animals, or just the fertilizer that's put on.
All right. I'll just make a note so that the Water and Sewer Commission can keep an eye on that.
Yep.
And it's just, Barney, it's just basic, the current system's 30 years old, it's just time to replace it, right? It's past its useful life.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
And we do change the resin out every, basically every seven years. It's actually come and due. And so, I know we're trying to work with Brian, like, do we need to change some of the resin before this happens? Because it's going to be a few months before we actually get the system.
Okay. Just another quick question, just to, because to alleviate some concerns and maybe, will the system be taken offline when we're switching out? Or will the old tank, or will the nitrate removal system still be in operation?
So, that's what's unique about this project is they are to do all prep work ahead of time to try to get, while the station's running, to get ready, like the couple of weeks prior. They will have one week from Monday morning to Friday afternoon to get everything completed, even if they have to work 24 hours. They don't see any reason why they can't do that because it does involve two, three, three subcontractors that they have to work with. But it shouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem, but, you know, they could be working late hours during that one week.
And where is this pump station? It's over by me, isn't it?
It's close, yes.
Okay.
It's Albahn Road, right at the corner of Albahn and.
Just in case if people hear the noises over there, I can say they're upgrading the water treatment system.
There's one house that's fairly close.
Okay.
But not too many there, like, right on top.
Just checking. Everything else is okay over there, right? And, but I guess I want to say also, will that, will that pump house be taken offline when the system, when they're switching out the system? Or will it still be?
So, the two pumps, they'll be shut down because the treatment won't be there. So, they actually have to cut some of the piping to remove the tanks and put new tanks in.
So, those two wells will not be feeding into the system while they're down, while they're, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
And that's why we want to minimize the time because we need to, you know, keep those running as long as possible.
Gotcha. All right, cool. Thank you, Barney.
All right, thank you. So, we'll go with the approval for $222,157.50 to Stoner Enterprises. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Next up is the approval to purchase two police vehicles. This is a quote from Hoffman Ford. The individual price per vehicle is $44,500 for a grand total of $89,000. We are, as we typically do, hop on another bid to keep costs low. I'm trying to look where the, oh, the government fleet prices. Thank you very much. I don't think, oh, Doug, really quickly, does this, does this include the outfit for the police vehicle or is this just for the vehicle itself?
That's just for the vehicle itself.
Okay. That's what I thought. There would be a separate bid for the outfit.
Correct.
And then, is the, is your, so, a lot of police cars are now going, I don't want to say unmarked, but the lights for the vehicles are no longer on the roof. They're more within the vehicle.
What they call.
And I know a lot of times with these, with these contracts, this is kind of like the new thing. I don't know if the mayor or yourself, do you still have the intention of putting the lights on top so that we are still more visible to residents?
The cars will be marked, but the bar light systems, it's a cost savings as well, put, make what they call a flat top. So, the lighting is put at various locations around the car, not just on the roof.
That sounded like, no.
Yeah, they're not going to have a bar light on them.
Thank you very much.
Just, I mean, Katie, or you can answer this, just to make sure to cover the basis here. Do you, do we know if Century participates in the CoStar program or not?
They do not.
Okay.
I think we've asked that before.
Yeah, I just, I thought so too, Council President. I just want to make sure.
We try, we try to do local whenever we can.
But, all right.
If it saves us money. Any other questions for the mayor or for the chief?
I have some questions.
Oh, go ahead.
And if somebody else wants to go first, that's fine. So, you're replacing two, you're replacing two vehicles, correct?
At this time, we have no spares. So, the cars that are being replaced would go into the fleet as spare vehicles. And that way, we have something that if one car is wrecked or has mechanical issues, we have another vehicle that's available that we can jump into for the time being. And as our department continues replacing vehicles on a replacement schedule, we'll replace those spares as we go along. So, right now.
Do you have a document or something that lays out your strategy for vehicle replacement? And are you trying?
We do what most departments do. They usually replace an average of two, one and a half to two vehicles a year.
Okay.
Usually once you get to a replacement site.
And why, why do you need to replace these? Is it mileage? What is the issue?
It's because at a certain point, the vehicles get so much wear and tear on them that it's more cost-effective to replace them. You can't run a vehicle forever. These vehicles have been running on the streets now for five years. So, they have a lot of wear and tear on them. There's a lot of stop and go with police cars, hard stops, quick accelerations. There's lots of vital time. So, they're put through harsh conditions more so than a regular, a regular vehicle that's on the street in a family. The use is much more harsh.
Is it, is it a fact that all the officers or a good amount of them, do they live outside the town of Mount Airy? Do they live quite, quite a ways away and do they take their cars home with them?
Yes, they do. They live, we have a take-home car program, which was suggested by the police commission when they just looked at forming the police department. Majority of police departments do have these programs. And I think the way our policy is written is within a 35 mile air, mile air radius within the town, they're allowed, they're permitted to take their vehicles home.
Okay. I want to make a, I mentioned this at the last council meeting and I'll make it a request tonight. I'm going to request, Mr. Mayor, that I think it would be helpful for the town to get an outside consultant and do a management review of the Mount Airy Police Department for the, for continuous improvement purposes, to look at, how many officers do we really need for 24/7 coverage? What's the appropriate salaries to be paying officers for retention and such? And then, it kind of gets into this. If our officers had the incentive to live in town, if that would provide an incentive, my understanding was, when the police department got set up, that was one of the goals, is to make it a community department and officers would live here within town and be seen around town all the time. I don't know whether there are trade-offs where if that were the case, there wouldn't be as much wear and tear on vehicles, if they'd last longer or whatever. But soup to nuts, I'm just making that recommendation, that that kind of a independent look be done. But that's all the questions I have on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I address that?
Can I just say something really quick? And it's probably going to be on lines of what the mayor's about to say. Prior to, as I was a volunteer in this town, prior to ever being an elected official, I worked with you, I worked with the mayor. So, this is our normal wear and tear of vehicle usage, the depreciation, the usage, everything you said. And I don't recall ever saying, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, that we wanted our officers to live in our town. Because we have lower salaries and we want to retain our officers, one of the things that was agreed upon, again, I was just a volunteer taxpayer in the town, was that they could take the cars home. So, I think we're in line with what we set up, how, you said we've had the police force for five years, so I'm talking six, seven years ago.
We, we're at this point, we're over six years now.
Six years. So, you're talking seven, eight years ago, we started having these discussions, right, Mayor?
Yeah.
To work with the, not even yet then chief, to plan and budget and set up this police station in future years. So, I would say everything you've done has been in line and the two cars per year, that's why you budget it, because you know you're going to need it.
Correct.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would agree with what you said and in today's environment, I mean, we're, if you're going to limit us to hiring officers who live in our community, but I think what you're saying is, having an incentive would be a good thing, but it's not realistic. I don't believe at all in today's environment to expect police officers to be, you know, town police officers to be living in town. It'd be a nice goal, but currently, all of our officers, do we have one that lives in town?
No.
No. So, everybody lives away. The take-home automobile process has been, has been there and it's worked effectively. I think if we took that away, it would be a bad thing to do. And I don't think you're, you're suggesting that. You know, we passed a budget last year to add to two cars and I actually intend on replacing two cars in next year's fiscal year budget. So, as the cars wear out, I mean, the police department comes at a cost. You guys aren't cheap.
We're not.
But quality is what we're striving for. So, so anyway, I just request that you go ahead and replace these two vehicles and then we'll have the two spares and hopefully, we'll be able to hire police officers, get ourselves back up to where we're supposed to be and all the vehicles will be used. And we have had scenarios where we needed a spare and didn't have one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just got one question for the chief. Sorry, you all thought, go ahead. Just a maybe jovial question or something. Have we ever looked at, I mean, does anybody, or are you aware if anyone makes hybrid or police cruises or anything?
They are starting. They're still kind of very new.
Okay.
I've actually spoke with some of the dealerships about them and there's usually a phase where you wait and see what's going to happen because.
Gotcha.
These vehicles are very costly to repair if something happens to them and, and working on them is, you know, the service of the vehicles is a little bit different and more time-consuming. So, it's more or less like giving it a period for, to put it in terms, letting the bugs kind of work out before you jump in there. So, so there is, there is, you know, departments that have done some little different things and so forth here and there. Like Sykesville has a Tesla and they just purchased a Ford Lightning pickup truck to use in their patrol. So, and that's.
Yeah, no, I got you. They have a much smaller area and much.
Small areas. It's also more costly at this point. You're paying more upfront, but less on the backend for service and fuel. So, there's some gives and takes. But until you get all the, I guess, all the, like I said, the bugs worked out of the technology and so forth, you might want something to be a little bit more stable before you jump in.
Gotcha.
And convert your whole entire fleet. I would favor maybe a test vehicle, but right now, it's very hard to get vehicles in general. They're still contemplating issues with the microchips and, matter of fact, I read an article today in the Police Officer Magazine that I can forward to everybody about, about potential shortcomings in fleet sales again because of microchips and supply chain issues.
Yeah.
We're still playing catch-up.
Yeah, I can attest to that because when we were up at, when the mayor and I were up at Carroll County a couple of months ago, a year, a year about so ago, they were buying their snowplows three years in advance because they couldn't get them because of supply issues. So, if this is any way delayed, we could be looking at another year and a half before we could potentially get anything because of supply chain issues.
Correct.
I do have one more question for the chief. I noticed when you were collecting at the stores for, I think it was Mount Airy Net?
Yes.
I would like to ask that you please, when they're outfitted and they're striped, I don't know if you guys have noticed, it's peeling off our cars and it looks awful. So, I'm hoping you guys are budgeting in this year's, next year's budget to get that fixed because it looks horrible. And I'm hoping it'll be a vendor where that's not going to be peeling off and coming off where it says Mount Airy Police and police is starting to peel off the car.
Correct, yes. We've attempted to address that and we've actually changed our whole entire design scheme of the vehicle moving forward so we won't have the wraps on wraps, so to speak and so forth.
Okay. I'd just like to throw that in the mayor's ear too, make sure we get that in the budget to fix that on the cars we have. So, if we're redoing, if you're doing the new ones, let's get the ones that have three and four and five years on them, make sure that's not peeling off.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All those in favor of awarding Hoffman Ford two police vehicles in the amount of $89,000, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And Mayor, appointments or reappointments?
All right, thank you. I'm looking to appoint Patty Washabaugh to the Board of Appeals. I currently have two empty spots because of Keith Galey resigning and Diane Gleason resigned as well. So, we actually have, need to get a couple of people on there. So, first one that I'm putting up is Patty Washabaugh, former councilwoman and former Planning Commission member.
All those in favor of Patricia.
Can I say one thing? And she was the former liaison to Streets and Roads. You couldn't send her our way? Seriously?
I want her for EDC.
No, I've been lobbying the mayor for people on Streets and Roads and she'd be a perfect one. Thanks, Patty. Sorry, go ahead, Council President.
All those in favor of Patricia Washabaugh going to the Board of Appeals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
All right. Moving into ordinances and resolutions. First up is Charter Amendment Resolution 2021-4. This is the code of conduct. This is for introduction with amendments and to schedule a public hearing. I will reintroduce. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. Councilmembers, as I indicated in an email to you and checking in the video of our workshops, the consensus was to make this an ordinance, keeping much of the language that was in the charter amendment, but to make it an ordinance. So, I am making a motion to withdraw this with the time to create an ordinance. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
I would like to offer a comment.
Now's the time.
Okay. I want to make sure I got it in there. Just a positive comment and just for the citizens, globally, all these charter amendments, the series of the charter amendments, I know there's some consternation about some of them. I just want to say that from my perspective, I've been trying to make modifications to each of them that serves the best interest of the citizens and the staff within, within our town government. And these two in particular, I think, are very important because they provide protections for our employees, they provide considerations for a safety-conscious work environment. If people are harassed, if they have safety concerns about any operations, they are free to raise those issues without fear of retaliation or reprisals. So, this was something that was important to me and I worked to try and get that language in here. I'm very comfortable doing what you said, Council President. I just want to make sure the language stays as is and it's just now wrapped, wrapped in the form of an ordinance.
Yep. And that is the intention and when I get that created, you can certainly double-check with my copying and pasting. All those in favor of withdrawing this to create. All those in favor of withdrawing this to create an ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to Charter Amendment Resolution twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one dash five, this is the whistleblower protection. This is also up for reintroduction with amendments and schedule a public hearing. I will reintroduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. The intention of this is to also do the same thing as twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one dash four, as Councilmember Demoter has stated, and the intention is to keep the language, but to turn it into an ordinance instead of a charter amendment. So I'm going to make a motion to withdraw this with the creation of an ordinance. Is there a second on that withdraw?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. Any comments? All those in favor of the withdraw, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Charter Amendment Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash three. This is the blackout period during elections. This is up for adoption. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. Is there any discussion by the council?
I'll offer a few comments. I guess I look at this, and it's, it's hard enough for us as a council to get through some business and get a three to two vote to pass something, to make progress in, in the normal course of a year, and now we're, we're adding a blackout period, and I'm not sure that there's a benefit to that. I also had a question, and I don't, I don't need a lot of answers, but I saw that under C two dash thirteen, under letter C, there's a set of conditions, and then under D, it says, this does not apply to, and it lists a lot of different ordinances, and I, I would think that budget ordinances would kind of fall in the same situation. If you were looking for some mischief, so to speak, I could see someone wanting to push through a budget amendment to get something funded that that particular group of council members wanted before the next election. So it seems like some of this in D could also apply under C, so I wasn't sure why some of that was excluded. But having said that, I, I, I'm not sure what the value added of this is to our processes.
All right, thank you. Any, any other comments?
Uh, yes, sir. As you just indicated, Councilman Demoter, you said there's some things in section D if people wanted to create mischief. So this was proposed by a member of the Planning Commission. I decided it was a good idea, so I brought it forward, and it's, the main goal of this is just to say what you, to avoid what you just said, to avoid mischief, mischief by council members that may be running or may not be running. It does offer protection on some ordinances. Budget and budget amendments due to when our elections are and when our charter is, states when a budget needs to be adopted, that's why it's under section D that it does, does not apply, because by charter, we need the budget adopted in May, for the most, most part. So I would hope that no elected representative would play mischief, do mischief with the budget. Unfortunately, that does have to do, that was one of my main concerns when looking at this, was the budget process on it. The other ones were suggested by our town attorney to put in there, too, just to make sure it's not a total blackout, if something did appear that we needed to take care of. But nine times out of ten, it's normally in May, it's a pretty light, particularly during election year, it's a pretty light schedule on it. So if we can't, I mean, we can get it done to in April, then, no, it's the month before, excuse me, March, we'll work on the budget, and that should take care of most of April is the budget and some other, other things, and then May is normally, the election is normally the day after now, it seems to be, after the council meeting, so if anyone's running, they'll, don't want to stay here all night on a council meeting the night before the election, because we got to get up early and spend sixteen hours at the polling place and throughout the day on it. So it's just basically all for protection to the citizens of the town to make sure that no mischief can be done. Some other jurisdictions do, do this, and it was worked out fine for them, so I thought it might be a good idea for this town to try it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of Charter Amendment Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Next up is Ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash three. This is alternative plan for funding the police station. This is up for adoption. I will introduce, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And then we can go ahead and go into discussion. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, to offer some comments for context. So, so this was born out of, recall, we had a police station workshop. We had a lot of discussion at the workshop about the importance, the critical need to move on funding a police station. We're many years behind in providing our police department with a viable police station. Many council members spoke up about this, and they used words such as, "Safety is paramount." "We need to stop kicking the can down the road." "We need to do something now and stop talking." "I think this is a great idea fiscally." "Safety is a priority," and I can go on and on about some of the comments. I had committed to putting together an ordinance that laid out a spending plan whereby we, we move five hundred thousand dollars now out of the capital reserves, and what we're doing as a council, this, this may be one of the last meetings we have as this band of a council, and so this is our opportunity to put a stake in the ground and say, we as this council think that a police station is important, we're willing to put a stake in the ground, commit to putting some money away initially from the capital reserves, and then every year thereafter, a set amount of money. And I've also provided to you, and I shared with the citizens, this, this two-pager, which is a background policy paper that lays out the whole approach, and the idea here is, this money can be used for everything from, you know, site determination, site selection, site acquisition, building to zone, building construction. So if it was in the first year or two years, we're still scoping out a site, this, this gives us funds to do that, it gives us seed money to pay for a site. If we don't need to buy a site and we have our own site, it gives us seed money to put towards a loan to fund a police station, and all of that is laid out in this issue paper that provides the different back, different scenarios. I did everything I said I would do for you councilmembers. I sent to each of you independently the ordinance and this policy paper. I asked for your thoughts about alternative funding amounts, and we're sitting here with the proposal of putting five hundred thousand dollars away from the capital reserves, and then three hundred and fifty thousand every year thereafter. I met with town staff on January thirtieth, and the information that they provided me was, there's like two point nine million dollars in capital reserves. If you look at the bottom footnote of my one pager, eight hundred thousand is committed to other projects. If we use five hundred thousand to set aside, that will leave at least one million dollars for ninety days of contingencies, and almost six hundred thousand dollars still available for other considerations. So to me, it seems like the money is there to move that, which is what this ordinance would do immediately, and then thereafter, we're committing a floor amount that says, we're willing to put X amount of money away every year towards a police station. We can put more towards it, but this at least sets a minimum amount. So what this ordinance presents is the five hundred thousand dollars initial set aside and three hundred and fifty thousand each budget year thereafter. What you have in front of you is a red line version, and this is something I worked on closely with town staff, and they were very helpful, and they provided the appropriate language concerning how the money would be moved, where it would be moved to, et cetera. Because initially, I had proposed a fund, that wasn't really the right terminology, so I worked with the budget staff, and this is the appropriate language, so we are good to go. I would, I would make this an amendment and move to pass this tonight, so if there's any other discussion.
All right, thank you, Council President. First off, I would like to put out there that we should delay a vote or further discussion on this, mainly due to the fact that we have received a red line about late this afternoon, so I don't believe I've had enough time to read over the red, red line to fully understand the implications of what has been amended into the bill, so we should delay that. I would also be concerned with, as I would say, the three Ps of this, while you are suggesting transferring of money later in budget years, but I've not heard the positions, projects, or purchases that the town will have to forego for whatever period of time that we would be transferring money to, so I would like to see that. Also, you just did a wonderful example of the blackout period before, because you said we were the last council to, that could handle this or do, do this. That's why the blackout period was proposed on that one. But I just believe the same thing, as I've always said on this, too, is that the budgets, the current budget cycle is almost over. We're going to start discussions of the current budget cycle within a month. This should just wait, we can decide on adding the five hundred thousand to next year's budget cycle, because quite frankly, two, two months is not going to make a difference in the amount of money that's appropriated whatsoever, and then we can figure out exactly what the opportunity cost to the town will be, as in positions, projects, and purchases in long term, because we just have a budget cycle of replacing vehicles on an annual basis to make sure the police are fully staffed, their equipment works, make sure we have town trucks to plow the roads and stuff. I would like to know the true opportunity costs to this town and its citizens in the long, long run, if we're committing to putting approximately up to three hundred thousand dollars a year away for it. So I'm not against it, I just want to know the full cost of this before we vote on it.
All right. I guess my, my comments are, are twofold. I think with the number of budget amendments that we have seen tonight from Barney, that we see from other, other areas, you just never know what's going to come up and where we're going to have to move money so that we can make sure that the operation of the town's infrastructure continues. And I'm not deflating the police department, it is part of the infrastructure, it's part of the safety infrastructure. However, when we start talking about water, or sewer, or nitrate, or replacing a, a water treatment plant, those, those things you can, you cannot budget for, and so you have to, you have to leave money in reserves to ensure that we can continue. Who knows what's going to happen next month? No one, no one can make, no one can make that prediction about what's going to happen, and, and, you know, eight years ago, we were talking about a reserve of twelve to fifteen million dollars, right? You're smiling because it's true, and we are now down to two. And that just sort of gives you an idea of how much things really do cost, and Mayor, I think you're going to have a real tough decision coming up in the next few months about how to make sure that we still have money, whether it's in our reserves or how we're going to have to fund our budget, without the additional costs that this legislative committee up here is, is trying to spend. I have, personally, I have no problem. I was here when the police department was started, we, we always wanted to get them into a building. Other costs happen. It's not that no one wanted to. We, we put them in a place that worked for now. It's not ideal, trust me. But my, I guess my issue is that with the ordinance, there, the ordinance is going to tell you whether you want to or not to take money and put it for the police station. You, if something else comes up, money still has to go to the police station, and then you're not going to have enough money to pay for that other thing. You're going to have to take out a loan to pay for an infrastructure need. I'm just giving you an example, maybe it was really bad. However, you should always have some in your savings account, right? I mean, this is good parenting. You should always have some in your savings account, so if, if something does go down, Brian needs the other trucks, if, you know, who knows what Brian's going to need as far as a forklift or whatever, there's another twelve or fifteen thousand, no offense, Brian, or whatever. I mean, it's just to keep the town going. To, to dedicate at this point, five hundred thousand now, and then each additional budget cycle, my, my one amendment would be, you, you would have to skip this budget cycle, would be my one amendment. I, I do not feel comfortable saying, put five hundred thousand now, and then in two months, three months, put an additional three hundred fifty thousand into that account. I would say you would need to wait till twenty twenty-five. That would be my one amendment, and then let's, let's try to recover a little bit with everything else that's, that's been happening. I think today's, today's been a good example of, hey, we got this, we got this, we got this. There's always something, and that's not to make excuses, but it's to, to manage the money. I think we, we just need to be very careful. When you create an ordinance, I've always, at least with the Flatiron, said, Katie, put it, put something in the side notes that, hey, for the next year, we need to remember to maybe budget, if we can, this amount of money, if it's available, right? And so as soon as you put something into law, though, you don't have a choice. You, you have to do it, and if our, if our reserves were twelve million or fifteen million, I would say, Stephen, no problem, no problem at all. I have no issue with that. We're not at twelve million, and we're not at fifteen million, we're at two million, which i- is a concern. That is a true concern, especially with, with our water the way that it is. That's, those are my concern, my comments. So if I was to even remotely vote for something like this, I would need to skip twenty-four with the three fifty, and honestly, that would be, that would be very generous on my, on my behalf.
Twenty-four?
Fiscal year.
Oh, I see.
So my comments are, this is a far less aggressive proposal than my original two million, but it is a nice compromise. It, it shows our commitment to public safety and finding a permanent home for the police sta, for the police station, and I do believe it needs to be law, because we haven't done anything to date, meaning this forces us to continue planning so that we can get to a permanent home for our police department. So Steve, I do support this alternative.
One of my questions is, Councilman Demoter, you said you worked extensively with town staff. Thank you for that. Have you worked with the Mayor, because he's the ultimate top of the food chain for the budget, so has the Mayor weighed in on where this would come from, or, and I got to go, it's, this, my, my comment is twofold. With what Councilman Munder said, we, I don't know how you got it this afternoon, I just got this red line when I came in tonight, so I'm not comfortable voting on something you just gave me. First of all, I see typos. Had to throw that out there for you, Steve, but
I'll, I'll take the hit for that.
How'd you not catch that? You're so good at that.
I do.
But, you did. So I'm not comfortable, A, voting on something that I just got that's redlined, I've, I've told you guys, don't, don't hand me a hot mess and ask me to vote on it. Right, Carl? But Mayor, have you weighed in on moving things from one to the other? Because it's your budget, and, and part three, I just remembered, didn't you say in, I don't know if it was last meeting, the meeting before, when we discussed this, it might have been when it was originally issued, you said you would work on the budget this year to get something in for the police station? Did you not say that on camera and said, you're recorded on camera now saying that? Right?
Definitely, we can't, and I'm recording on a podcast as well. It's, we can't ignore it, and I, I can't go through the rest of my term without figuring out how to get us a police station built, and there are hard decisions to be made. Steve did come up to my office, we did talk about this, he may have heard different things He may have heard different things from what I said, because he brings up a lot of things. And eventually I'm like, yeah, yeah, okay, I get it. But, but that's not agreement with it. If, if you're done commenting, I had a question as well. And, and that's for Katie. When you talked to Councilman Demoter about a, a different fund, is there, my understanding was this is money that's going to be put into the budget that will have to be pulled from the budget and then we'll have to redo it? Or are we talking about IRA? What are we talking about?
So the way, that's why they're the redlined version. Because the wording of the original kept saying fund. So being that this is law, we would have to create a new fund.
Okay.
And it would be funded from the general fund. So we would have a capital projects fund that would be funded from the general fund.
All right.
So that's why I worked with Councilman Demoter to reword it so that we don't have to create this new fund. Essentially, what you would create is a, is a new reserve account.
Okay, so at the.
Transfer money into that reserve account.
So at the end of the fiscal year, that money, you, you don't have to.
My ordinance is when I pull them out, I tell, in that ordinance, which is law, I say, okay, we're going to pull this money out. And usually it goes back to where it came from. It's going back to a general fund, capital reserves. This would say it's coming out and it's going to whatever we name that reserve.
And at that point, it's untouchable unless choose for the police department. Okay, so, so that answers one of my questions in this redline version. But then the other thing along with what Councilmember, Council President Poirier was saying, I mean, I'm, I have not received the budget numbers from, from staff yet. She's putting them together. I'm going to see them. I'm not comfortable pulling this much money out of the budget until I see what's going on, because I think, I think I'm probably going to have a panic attack when, when I see this year's budget. Because, you know, the ARPA money is, is running out. We got a lot of expenses that are coming up. I'm, I'm very reluctant to pull money out of the budget. But I'm also realizing that we have to, we have to build this police station. Based on that, I'm, I'm going to have Katie run the numbers, not just on our current tax rate, but, but look at other tax rates and see what we gotta do. Because Councilmember Reed, I agree with you. Write that down. There's, there's two ways to fund things.
I consider that a win.
A parting gift. There's two ways to fund things. And that's, you gotta look at the tax rates or, or you have to develop some houses. So, you know, right now, we're, we're in a pickle. If we're going to start moving forward on funding a police station, then, and this council, don't look at me, I enforce the tax rate and everything. You guys set it. So if you want to build a police station, there are some hard decisions that have to be made in, in this budget year, next budget year.
Okay, so I want to clarify a couple things that have been said. First of all, this redline version is, is, is simply an aid. For example, oftentimes we come to the table and we make a verbal amendment to an ordinance. I could have just read these words out loud, but I chose to provide a red line to make it easier for people to see what my verbal amendments would be. The second point is, these changes are very minor. It's, it's not quite the hot mess. It's pretty straightforward to make it easier for people to understand the, the changes that were being made and because they're changes that needed to be made according to our budget folks. I did coordinate with the mayor on this. And really, the mayor said everything that he just said now at the end of the police station workshop. And then I coordinated through the mayor to work with town staff. Just a couple statements. I believe that the money is there to do what I have proposed. I have looked at the current budget. I have looked at specific areas where money can be reallocated. Again, the current budget has money for different things. But the next budget cycle, it doesn't mean they have to go to those same things. It's money that's available on the table to put where the priorities are. I found easily in the current budget, at least $250,000 that could be put aside each, each year to support this effort. The money I had proposed coming out of the capital reserves is capital reserves. Money for things like water and sewer, that comes out of a different reserve, a different account. There's also operational reserves. There are also operational savings accounts. There's also a capital savings account. So I'm just stating, from my perspective as a council member, the money is there. I'd be willing to put $100,000 away each year. I'm just looking for a commitment from this council that says, we're going to put something away. And you can always put more than 100,000. But I am confident we would have 100,000 to put towards this. What else did I want to say? The other thing is, this ordinance calls for an action plan where the mayor and the council work together to develop specific actions, milestones, targets, et cetera. It forces us to develop a plan. So I understand, I think I know where this vote's going. And I remember at the police station workshop, I said, however it goes, it goes. But I want to make a motion and take a vote. So it's on record that I believe this is a priority and we are not doing our due diligence by not putting a stake in the ground now. And I think the money is there. So I'm ready to make a motion unless there are other comments.
Councilman President, yes, I have a comment. You've just indicated that you've went through the budget. You've indicated you somewhere between 100 and 2,000 dollars that you've identified as cuts. Can you inform this council what programs, where those cuts are coming from that you've identified? What projects, what positions, what purchases we will have to forego for however long?
I can. I don't know whether you want to hear them, because you may not like to hear some of them. But yes, I am.
Please inform us.
Do you want to take the time to do that, Council President, or?
He's asking a question.
Okay. So on the operational side, there was a $25,000 Build a Brighter Future grant program. That program is done. We don't know if we're going to have to do that next year, but let's say we don't need to do that next year, because a police station is more of a priority. That's 25,000. I see a duplication in the EDC budget and the Towns Own Community Outreach Budget. Those two budgets are duplications. One of those budgets, in my view, can go away. That's another $25,000. There's currently $200,000 budgeted for the Flatiron Building. In the side notes, it says that $200,000 is to be used to support whatever option the council identifies. This council formally took a vote and said, we need to demolish the building. So there's $200,000 right there. Again, if you're setting priorities, you have wants and needs. A police station is a need, a Flatiron Building is a want. That's $200,000 right there. So I just got you to 250, 275,000. And you may not agree with those, but you said, where could the money come from? And I've given you some ideas of where it could come from.
So let me get this straight. So if we take a vote tonight and rescind that late night vote or motion to demolish it, that 200,000 could potentially be gone from your budget. And if we approve this tonight for 350 plus, then an extra X amount of programs need to be cut. So I'll look at, just depending on one large sum of money for something that you may not agree with, as should not be the prime, or primary funding source for this budget change or budget reallocation. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
So if there are no other comments, I'd like to make a, a motion. Is the right time to make a motion?
Go for it.
I move, I move that we approve ordinance 2023-3 using the amended redline language and modifying the $350,000 each budget year to 100,000 per budget year. That is my motion.
You do need a second. He made a change. Okay, so the new motion on the table, as it currently stands, is to stand with the 500,000 tonight. And then each additional budget year for the 100,000 reduced from 350. Is that correct, Councilmember?
That is correct. And with the redline language to get the pot of money.
Redline language. Thank you.
Do you mind if I ask for clarification on that? So what's the starting amount that you were looking at, 500?
It's still 500, sir.
Okay, and what about each year afterward?
100.
So not 350?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that is a floor amount. We can always add more, but this is saying, at a minimum, we have to put 100,000.
Okay, all right.
Yet again, Council President, I just, it's a budget amendment. It's a lot of money. I believe it would serve the town better if we just delayed this vote to next month or once the budget is better formulated.
Can't you make a motion for that?
I, we got to vote on his first.
I don't think so.
All right. Stops. Table or whatever.
Yeah, I make a motion to abstain or table, abstain from taking any type of votes on this, on any amended versions related to 2023-3 until the appropriate time, following that the soonest time of next month and/or when the budget for 2024 is being discussed.
Can I just get clarification? Is the abstain a postpone? Or is that a table? Just so that I can get the correct language.
Well, I, I think he meant postpone.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So Councilmember Munder has made a motion to postpone until the budget cycle for '24. Is that correct?
Or the next fiscal year budget cycle, whichever. What's that called, Katie? Is it 2024, 25?
Uh, next one is 23, 24.
Okay, okay. Yeah, whatever. The next fiscal year budget cycle.
All right.
May I make a comment before we vote?
Well, we're just trying to get a second on his motion. Is there a second on Councilmember Munder's motion?
A second.
All right. If you would like to make a comment now, sir.
So, so just, so the motion I made is, is overridden by this motion for consideration first? Is that the way?
So if this does not get passed, then I believe we revert back to the original motion.
Okay.
Look at me.
Okay. The last comment I'll make, and again, when I, when I met with town staff on January 30th, they, they openly shared that meeting, which was a business meeting, an open meeting, that the staff had worked, prepared a memo proposing a tax increase for the town. So I know that's being workery with you. I don't know whether you wanted to speak to that now, because if we don't do this, I don't know what your plans are to fund a police station. So do you want to speak to the tax increase that you have been working on?
Yeah, I'll speak to the tax increase. Since this council has decided that they're going to bring up this ordinance, the, and certainly with the original ordinance that, that brought out the $2 million amount. If you put us in a position where, where we have to fund a police station, then there's a couple of ways to get it done. One of which is increasing the taxes. And yes, there is a memo for that. I'm not going to increase the taxes, you are. If you guys want to build a police station in that manner, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the potential of having to do that. Along these lines, what we're talking about is shifting money and putting ourselves at risk at not having enough money to fund the things that, the other things that we need to, or yes, want to fund throughout the upcoming years. So, so that's kind of where we're going with this. If you postpone it a month, it gives us an opportunity to, gives me an opportunity to work through the budget and see what we actually have available. Maybe, maybe after studying it, it might be a good idea to set aside into a, a different account, you know, but not 500,000. Maybe it is 100,000. I think that with what I have in front of me, I, I think it would be worthwhile to either wait a month or reject this so that I can come up with a plan to figure out how to get us into a position to build a police station.
All right. The motion on the table right now is to postpone this until the next fiscal budget, which is the cycle for '24. All those in favor of postponing 20, ordinance 2023-3, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Was that 3-2?
3-2.
3-2? Lynn?
She was a nay.
Okay.
To postpone?
I mean, aye, sorry.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Nay to disagree. All right, I apologize. Next up is ordinance 2022-32. This is on MXUCC zone. This is up for adoption. I will make a motion to introduce. Is there a second?
Second.
I gotta make sure I got the right paperwork. Am I three, double copied?
Yeah, that's MX.
Okay. 2022-32. All right, we can go into comments. And Councilmember Demoter?
Yes, so, so just help me understand, maybe I'm missing something. So on page two of four.
Yep.
Under D, all of these items are underlined. To me, meaning this is all new material, correct?
Yep, it's being added to what has already been written.
And then there's an attachment here, which is a redline version of the same document. On, on page two of four, and that, under six. Oh, I see, okay. These are all still new. I, I see the change that was made. Okay, my question is, all of these.
Before you ask your question, what, what version are we going off of? The red line? The small version or the other, the original version?
Well, it depends on who, what are you moving to be approved? So the first item is as.
Okay, sorry.
The first one is as introduced originally. And the red lines are with the Planning Commission's recommended change.
Okay, so we are talking, I did not realize that that was what was happening. I introduced the original, which is, I guess, not the small copy.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So my, yeah, that was my que- I was trying to understand the, the attached one, which had the small text. So, so what I'm hearing you say is, items one through five were already slated for change. And item six, the Planning Commission suggested the wording, "packaged goods." And in the version we're voting on tonight, it says, that sells alcohol, alcoholic products for off-site consumption. So that's a difference, right? And then my other, my other question is, everything listed in item D, are we being consistent in the other zones? Like, you know, community commercial, MXD, everything? So this makes everything consistent?
Not the same. Pawn shops, bait shops, tobacco dispensaries?
So what, the only MXUCC development that we have right now is Green Tree. Sorry, Carl, but I feel like this, hold on. I feel like, again, this is targeted toward one development, meaning we're saying these shops are okay on South Main Street or in that commercial area, but they're not okay in North Mountain area. So I don't feel that it is consistent across all zones.
You can feel that way, but the MXD ordinance that we'll be discussing, that the Planning Commission voted for in favor to move ahead with, does make some changes that correlate some of these changes in the MXUCC, also in the MXD zone. Sometimes it's better to get ahead of their game than not. They also are, a lot of the, what I heard during the discussion of the MXUCC proposal for that area was that, can we not make the, if there's any commercial development, to make it more consistent or compatible with the residential component that is surrounding it? And that is what this ordinance does. During the discussions of the ordinance in front of the Planning Commission, we went back and forth on how to adjust it, particularly with the sale of alcohol restaurants. We've agreed to that. The packaged goods was suggested at the, from, via the Carroll County Liquor Board. So that is good. We're satisfied with that. Also with talks of neighbors. so that is good. We're satisfied with that. Also with talks of neighbors, you know, some at Ridge and other areas, they are fine with this type of wording in it to make sure that this area stays a little bit more residential instead of a heavy commercial area with some of these shops that you drive off, you pick it up and you leave. So we've worked at it at the planning commission. The planning commission has given a favorable recommendation as drafted and as amended. So it's not targeting any one area. It's protecting any other areas with, that might come under the MXUCC also on it.
Again, we're saying this is okay in north of Mounary, but it's, it's not okay in North Mounary, but it's okay in South Mounary, meaning has anyone spoken to the residents in this, on the south end of Mounary to say if we want these or not? Again, it's targeting one development.
Does South Mounary currently have these type of shops down there?
Three on one corner.
Okay. Is it harder to, Tom, maybe you have to ask me, answer this question. Is it more difficult? Once a shop sets up into particular zones in commercial, we need to leave an area for these shops, for these type of businesses to set up. So if you exclude from every zone certain businesses, then you're running the risk of, I can't think of the correct term, but via zoning, exclusion via zoning, like some places tried for dispensaries and they were ruled down because they left no place for these types of businesses to set up shop. So by doing this, we are not eliminating any area location for these businesses to shop, to set up shop. As you indicated, there are currently three down on the south end of town, and there's actually four, because you forget the Carroll Independent Fuel has one also, and they're getting ready to have another one down there with Tobacco Hut. So they were already established. It's more difficult to eliminate or to restrict established businesses than prior to their establishment in a particular zone. So yet again, you can say it's particularly targeting one zone. It is primarily residential. South end of town has been throughout the years, unfortunately. If you look at that, that whole area is and currently, has and currently is zone community commercial, a commercial area. So I don't see a problem. We are not excluding this for anything. The applicant and owner of your, which is indicating where, was fine with the changes too, so he did not have any changes. We worked with him for several months on these two, so they agreed to it. So I'm pretty satisfied that we're not up against any legal concerns with this.
So wait, you worked with a developer to write an ordinance?
No. He, he came to the meetings and spoke out with his concerns. And he had valid concerns. So I, and we could not cleanly do it the way I wanted to do it. So it was that, and the Carroll County Liquor Board actually indicated also that it was not a clean way of doing that. So take it as you will on that comment, but it's, it's valid concerns and it can't be done cleanly or potential legal concerns with it. And again, as I've said during the whole thing, that the liquor laws in Maryland are very bizarre is the best way to describe it. Each county can set their own requirements. There's not anything blanket about the liquor laws from county to county. So, and unfortunately, Carroll County did not have anything that I could do with this. That would make me satisfied that we're not doing something illegal.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So when I originally said yes, I was referring to MXD where it does include pawn shops, vape shops and dispensaries. What is the difference? Is there a difference? There must be, that we have a four and then we need to then have a five? What's the difference between a dispensary and a business that sells cannabis for medicinal or recreational use?
I will have to refer that to our town attorney on that one. I, I mean, medicinal dispensaries might have just been.
Oh, let's re, you said, let's refer it over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I did not come up with both of those, so I, I don't know. I'm sure there are dispensaries who dispense.
Dispense stuff.
CBD oil?
Okay.
I don't know what it.
Well, maybe it's preparing, maybe I was looking at it for also due to the, however the state starts defining and allowing the sale of recreational use, maybe they'll get rid of the, of the dispensary and make it a one-stop shop for medicinal and recreational use or just do it. So it's.
Okay.
Kind of, kind of more clarifying to try and prepare for all the outcomes.
All right. And, you know, full, full disclosure, I'm completely in the dark with what your previous conversation, if there's any particular thing. I have no idea what, what you guys are talking about. But what does, is this a, is this, any business that sells alcoholic products, is that a liquor store?
Via, I'll let John, because he had the discussions with the Carroll County Liquor Board, and there's a fine line between what a packaged goods store is and what a restaurant, because some of the concerns were, I was brought up by the commission chair and stuff, by owning a restaurant, you have a, I want to say, a zoning right to apply for. You cannot necessarily.
Can you clarify that for me?
Eliminate that.
Well, I'll try, I'll try to clarify. So ultimately, a restaurant has the ability to uncork a bottle of wine or sell beer, packaged goods out of their restaurant.
Okay.
As, as a right of their, of their.
Liquor license or?
License, exactly. So I think the, the, what Carl was trying to achieve was basically to not have a packaged goods store, and that's what they would classify it as, as a packaged goods store. So I'm not sure any business that's selling alcohol products.
So don't open a bottle of wine and I just want to buy it and then I can walk off-site and bring it to my house.
That's Mounary Liquors or Castle.
For a, for a restaurant. If you're buying it from a restaurant, a restaurant is allowed to sell you beer and wine for off-site.
I can't buy their bottle.
Like, what do you mean they're?
And take it home. Like, if I go to Lorianzo's and I say, hey, this is great wine. I want to buy your bottle.
They have to have an off-sale.
Off-site sale license.
That's what this refers to.
For the restaurants, packaged goods are defined.
No, I just named a restaurant, Lorianzo.
Well, no, as, as I think Councilwoman Reed was saying, it depends on the license the establishment has. Say if they don't have the type of liquor license from the county that allows them to do that, they won't be. But normally by, say, I'm not sure when it, when it refers back to a pre-open bottle, that if you like it there, if they can sell a, an open bottle to you, that is the liquor law.
Well, typically you go into a restaurant and you can't buy the bottle and walk out of the restaurant.
If it's an empty.
I'm asking, I'm just asking, what is, what is this?
A liquor store.
A liquor store.
Anything that sells, would be allowed to sell, I guess, hard liquor or liquor off-site, packaged goods is how they define it as in Carroll County Code.
Good grief.
Yeah, as, as I was just saying, the alcohol liquor licenses in this state are convoluted at best.
All right.
So, I mean, as I said, the packaged goods, that is, that, that was, using the packaged goods definition was given to us by the Carroll County Liquor Board person. So we're satisfied with that viable definition that would achieve the purpose of some of this.
I don't know. My only, I guess my only comment, looking up at mixed-use development, we already have pawn shops, vape shops and dispensaries. Yeah, mixed-use. We already have non-permitted uses.
Non-permitted use in MXD?
No, I know.
This is a different classification.
I got that part.
Okay, got you. Okay, sorry.
I'm just saying, keeping with consistency.
Okay, got you.
Our idea is no pawn shops, no vape shops and no dispensaries. That's sort of, that's sort of where I stand.
Yes, consistency.
Not say tobacco shops, you know, cigar store or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, those are my comments.
Yes, consistency amongst its own.
Anybody else have any comments?
I have some additional comments.
Yep, go ahead.
My, my, my overview comment is, this ordinance, based on the discussions I've just heard, there's still much confusion that abounds about what the definition of some of these terms are, so I will not be supporting this today.
I don't remember where the heck we're at. Do we first and second this or what?
I think it's to approve the amended version, maybe, Tom? Or did Jason mess up at the beginning?
As I recall, there was a, an introduction. Somebody probably needs to move to approve.
Yeah, I think so, because we were talking about this one, not, I didn't even know there was a red line to the, to the original. All right, all right, I was, my intention was to re, to introduce the, the big version here, not even the second one, but to be quite honest with you, I'm not super excited about what I'm seeing in D. But regardless, all those in favor of ordinance 2022-32, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Jason, I don't, you didn't say which one you were voting on.
I did, the big one.
That's not the amended version.
So.
Original or the red line?
Not the amended one.
Not the red line.
Okay, so it's that one. So I'll make another, are you going to make another motion to introduce the amended version?
There was an introduction. There was never a motion. What, what's on, what should happen next is somebody should move, if they so choose, to approve ordinance 2022-32 and specify whether it is as, with recommended changes from the planning commission or as originally introduced.
Okay, let me see.
That's probably where it ought to start.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve 2022-32 with the recommended changes via the planning commission.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Not hearing a second. Ordinance 2022-32 does not get approved. All right, moving on. Next up is ordinance 2023-2. This is the purchasing procedure for $3,000 or less revision to increase the cap to 5,000. This is for introduction. I will introduce. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Councilwoman Reed, seconds.
She's in it up for adoption.
No, it's for adoption.
What did I say? Intro? Sorry. All right, my, my apologies. Can you just change my wording?
I have some comments whenever the right time to offer them.
Can I just make my first comment?
Yes.
So just in the title, it says, Mayor, you can just ask for clarif, or give me clarification. It said 3,000 to 15,000?
Yeah.
But then I thought it was supposed to be 5,000.
It's 5,000.
I know it, it is elsewhere. I was just asking for, like, why is the title reading 15? Because it gives the impression that now, no offense to you, sir, but that you can go from 3,000 to 15,000 instead of 5,000.
Yeah, I, I could whip out the code book and, and see if there is a section in there that, that goes 3 to 15,000. There's, there's ranges in there.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody on the staff has that one memorized or not.
And I know there's, there's been discussions so that it, it gives you a little bit more leeway with, it is changed in 26-5, which I'm fine with. It says 3,000 to 5,000 or less. I was just wondering about the title. That was my only comment. And then Councilmember Demoter?
I do. I have a few, few comments. The first one is, again, you're, you're expanding the, the dollar amount ceiling for which you don't need approvals. And I, I happen to like the checks and balances and I like keeping it at $3,000, especially because I am a fiscal conservative and especially because we've been talking about budgets and wants and needs, and I think that we need to be careful with every dollar we spend. So I, I like keeping it the way it was. The other comment is in the whereas, third whereas, second line, it says, "Bids often propose the use of cheaper steel manufactured in China, even though such steel is of inferior quality in comparison." I don't know whether you know that every piece of steel is of inferior quality, perhaps some is, but I would think that when you're procuring things, you would do your due diligence to make sure you're getting quality steel. And this says you're willing to pay up to 15% above the lowest bid. Again, I don't know how much steel the town uses. I don't know that it's that much, but I'm not willing to pay even 15% more for something when we need to watch every dollar, every thousands of dollars that we spend. So I, I am not supporting this ordinance.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, please refresh my memory if you can, or maybe Katie can or something. I believe this was done because due to the recent inflationary costs and everything else, just basic purchases of needs that, maybe David can come up here too, with discussions with staff and other people, say Brian or the staff is beginning to hit the limit on everything, purchasing just due to the general rise of costs. So this was a way to make sure that they could conduct their daily activities without bringing general, I don't want to say non-important items to the council for approval, but just so their daily operations can continue on unfettered. And also, I kind of find it disingenuous that you're willing to send our taxpayers' money to China for a potential inferior product when you're just not willing to pay it extra money for American-made product. And you want, and you're beginning to want cost analysis and benefit and everything on that. So I get where you're coming from, but there's sometimes you just have to accept the fact that it's more important to keep Americans employed and foundries here so we have a domestic production system, more so than foreign countries. Thank you. Now, let, let the council, let the town administrator speak regarding your stuff here.
I would just note that one of the things that in Public Works is purchasing of valves. And the fact of the matter is that where we could purchase a valve for under $3,000 is easy as two years ago. It doesn't cost that anymore. So the process becomes very slow. The other issue is, when you talk about quality, that we could, we could buy a valve, I'm using valves as an example, we can buy a valve, put it in the ground, and we're replacing it in five years or three years if it's an inferior product. Whereas you get a good piece of material in there and maybe it's 10 years till we replace it. So it's, it's, it's buying a Kia or Mercedes and yeah, you may pay more, but are you going to own that longer down the road? When we're putting something in the ground that's subject to the elements, then are you replacing it every three to five years or are you replacing every 10 to 15 years? And then how many times do you have, there's a cost-benefit ratio that you have to consider. And, and we use the three and $5,000 because the valve was the example that, that we ran into. And we all know, and I'm sick of hearing about supply chain, but that's what's happening in that everything is, everything's going up, if you bend to a gas pump. So it's just the cost of doing business. It's a slight increase from 3,000 to 5,000. In the scheme of things, it's, it's minimal, but we use that number by the example of the valves that we, we're buying to replace.
Katie, did you have a comment?
So I was actually going to address your comment about the section in the, it should actually say 3,000 and 30,000. So that's the.
That was my, I had circled it because I'm on pa, the top of page two, where after the, right now, the limit is 3,000 to 30,000. And, and anytime you go up over 3,000 at this point, the town staff and, and the mayor have to follow this A and B. And I, I believe there's a double period after that A there. However, now, as the town administrator just indicated with this valve, even a valve that was less than 3,000 is now going over that mark and no higher than 5,000. It just adds a little bit of flexibility. It, in, in all regards, there's been, you know, I'll say a lot of supervision on the, on the fiscal side of responsibilities from this legislative slide to make sure that money is spent where, where it is being spent. It's a give-and-take process. The, the mayor, years back, could go up to 30,000 before even coming to this table. So I don't think it's, at least in my opinion, I don't think it's a, a high regard to go up to $2,000 based on what's happening to this economy. Everything is going up. It is, it is what it is. David, thank you. Katie, thank you for that change.
One other example that was brought out by Public Works, and that's the manhole covers and the.
covers and the, um, the metal that was used in the manhole covers. We ordered some that were Chinese, and those, those were garbage as well, so.
So Steve, just to kind of put this in perspective for you, um, I can't pull up chapter seventy-three of the harmonized tariff schedule, but articles of China are subject to section three oh one of the Trade Act of nineteen seventy-four, meaning when you buy it, you automatically pay an additional twenty-five percent duty. So even if we're paying fifteen percent locally, it's still cheaper than twenty-five percent. I only know that because that's my work.
Well, thank, thank you for the, thank you for that extra data point. And I was gonna say, I've already, having listened to the conversation, I've already changed my thinking on how I'm going to vote on this.
Council president, let me just, so were there changes that needed to be made in the title then, or just?
Title.
Just the title then, okay. Okay. But, but is it still between three, or, or should that be five now in the title?
It's currently three and thirty.
Okay.
In the body of the ordinance, we're seeing you change to three thousand.
Okay, I just wanted, cool, thank you.
All right. Um, if there's no other comments, all right, all those in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four. This is the rehabilitation and preservation of the Flatiron Building. This is, uh, for adoption. Uh, I will, uh, introduce. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we can go into discussion of this. Um, I guess I'll, I'll start. Um, and I may, in, in all honesty, I may be the one that, uh, is teetering this, uh, this vote tonight. Um, this honestly is, is, uh, a, a tough vote for me. It goes both ways. As I was reminded eight years ago, why, why I started running and all my, all my slips that I passed out to people, um, it says, uh, to do something different with the Flatiron Building, demolish it, rehabilitate it. Uh, it did not say. Um, it said to work through the options, pick an option, and let's move forward because year after year, uh, council after council, no one wants to touch that building. It is, uh, it's like bewitched or something. I don't, I don't know. And I'm sure Bob King watching right now is like, yep, we're not touching that. And Peter Helt's like, yep, we're not touching that. And so they're all laughing at me, uh, 'cause here we are bringing it up and, and we're gonna take a vote. Um, regardless, um, something needs to be done. Uh, and, and to be very honest with you, that I know the task force has done its due diligence, and I appreciate everything, and I hope that you understand that I've, I've given you guys, uh, equal opportunity and, uh, put everything off and, and listened to you guys fair-heartedly. So I hope, I hope you truly understand that. Uh, and that's saying, I don't know how I'm voting right now. Um, but I know that a lot of work has gone into it. I know a lot of dedication has gone into it. Um, as some people spoke this evening, um, I, you know, gosh darn it, I wish some of you guys would speak up sooner than later. Um, but, uh, we'll, we'll take your comments. They're all equal comments. Uh, taxpayer dollars are going to be spent. Um, they're gonna be spent either way, whether we do something with the building, um, or, or rehabilitated or not do anything. Your tax dollars are still going into that building. Um, I, you know, I don't want my tax dollars going into that building, but I want something better for Main Street, and that's where I'm sort of teeter-tottering. If we can get some of the things that are opposite of that building with, uh, you know, so there's not, not a pavilion, uh, but I lost my train of thought. I- i- if people can sit out there, enjoy Main Street, um, enjoy live music, I just want a place for, for people to hang out, and if that is demolishing the building and putting something else there, cool. And if it's not, and we have to rehab it and still get that other stuff in there, that's what I'm looking for. That's the give-and-take I'm willing, I'm willing to, um, work out, and my brain is hurting right now because I don't, I don't know which way I'm gonna to do that. But those are, those are just my comments, 'cause I need to think. So if anyone else, uh, wants to make a comment.
I could start if you'd like.
Go for it.
I will try and keep my comments very focused and get this out quickly, but I ask that you bear with me, 'cause this is an important vote. Um, and I want to get my comments in for the record. So first of all, uh, sincerely, I, I, a message to the sponsors of this ordinance, it, it appears that you really don't want my vote. Either you don't want it, or you didn't want to work for my vote, or maybe you just don't care 'cause you think you don't need my vote. But whatever the reasoning, I look at this ordinance, and it's, it's hard for me to support this ordinance the way it's written. Um, I also, I'm disappointed because it's a missed opportunity to find a collaborative solution. And I'll speak to that a little bit more at the end. First, I want to talk about the ordinance. I think the ordinance is flawed 'cause it's the wrong document. Um, to me, you don't write an ordinance. An ordinance is a law. You don't write an ordinance to take an action on one specific building, especially a government building. When you write a law or an ordinance for buildings, it's usually to set up like a set of standards or codes, for building codes, an inspection regimen, a program, a process. That's what a building-related ordinance, to me, is per our town code, not to take an action on a specific building. So I think that the document's the wrong type of document. Um, secondly, it calls out for nullifying the vote last May, and that is a red flag for me because in my view, you can't just say a vote didn't happen, and a vote isn't on the record. This council, as a legislative body, had the authorities and the right, and we took a vote, and in my view, it was a legal vote, and that vote has standing. So by saying you're nullifying that, I don't think you can do that. Now, if this ordinance passed, it would automatically essentially override that vote, but I don't think you should be calling out that you're nullifying the previous vote, because that vote was real and it was legal. Um, the third thing is, this is really a blank check. You heard this earlier in some public comments. This is a blank check. To me, the task force has gone backwards because originally you had a preferred option of putting a tunnel through the building. After the Flatiron Workshop, what you said at the workshop was, hey, you know, we'll do anything. We'll work anything out. We want to leave all options open. So we just want you to vote to restore the building. That's what you, that's what we want. So you're giving me a document, a law, that says, I want you to approve restoring the building. I'm not telling you what it's gonna be. I'm not telling you a timeframe. I'm not putting spending caps. There's no guiding principles here. For example, if you had a list of guiding principles that said, the safety of our pedestrians and our drivers is of paramount importance, and it will be used to drive the decision-making on the Flatiron Building, that tells me that you're gonna consider safety in every decision you make, a- and you're not doing that. So it truly is a blank check, and, and I'm sorry to use the analogy, but it makes me feel like I'm going over to some shopping center parking lot at midnight, and I'm signing a contract on the hood of the car. So this is, this is a, just an openly blank check with no checks and balances. Um, the language in it is a bit flawed. It says it's to implement the Flatiron Structural Assessment, and it's true, that structural assessment spoke specifically to the building pass-through and structural repairs to the foundation. We don't even know if that's the option now. So you can't say this ordinance is tied to that assessment. Another comment in the wording of the ordinance, it says in here to make habitable, to make the building habitable. To me, that's an admission that the building is not inhabitable. And if you look at our town code, that now was the missing piece that fully meets the town code's definition of blighted buildings in eighty-five point one, section B four, where it says, no person or entity shall maintain or permit the maintenance or existence of any blighted structure or property owned, leased, rented, or occupied by such person or entity. It's even a town government building. So that's why I continue to believe the motion and the vote taken last May was, in my view, still the, the best option for this building. Um, the ordinance says you're going to enhance the structural integrity. Enhance means to make better. You have deficiencies. First, you have to address deficiencies. And now I'm gonna get into the safety issues. Um, again, if you read the official communications from the town in the four county catch, um, May second, twenty twenty-two, it says, two engineering assessments identified structural concerns, including a crumbling foundation and poor air quality. The building also poses hazards for pedestrians and motorists due to its proximity to Main Street location. You heard me speak to the location issue earlier from that email I read you. The downtown vision plan, the project goals were to maximize the commercial viability of the Main Street corridor and to reconcile the safety and circulation concerns posed by the building. And in the recommendation of the vision plan, again, throughout the course of the community engagement process, residents of Mount Airy voiced their concerns regarding the future of the Flatiron Building. A majority felt the building's location, configuration, and unkept condition lent itself to demolition and rebuilding. Additionally, some past options were ruled out. It's no longer an option to leave the building, as is, as it is structurally unstable. Mind you, this recommendation was made through a charrette process, the one you all are lauding to be used in, in the Beck property. Um, and mind you, the vision plan cost a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars with heavy citizen involvement, heavy town staff involvement. That's a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Keep that in your head. Um, there was a meeting last February with Preservation Maryland, and in that meeting, the mayor made a statement that said, the elephant in the room is safety, the safety of Main Street and, and Main Street safety concerns. Again, it's speaking to the narrowness of the roadway there and the location issues. Um, to me, leaving the building in place is simply not an option. I believe it's going to kill the downtown zone. It's not going to reinvigorate the downtown zone if you leave that building in place. It's simply not, because you're not providing for pedestrians and dealing with the roadway issue. I think we would be cheating our citizens and the future of the downtown for a chance to truly revitalize that downtown area. Then I want to hit the town survey results. Not gonna go through them all. We spent ten thousand dollars on a town survey, never mind all the people involved, all the people that took it. I have trust in the citizens of Mount Airy and everyone who took that survey. Seventy-five percent of the people who took that survey said they wanted something other than the restoration of that building. Um, last couple comments. Um, I spoke to some, who I view as highly-regarded town staff. One town staff member, I asked twice throughout the process, would you keep the building or get rid of it? This town staff member said, I'd still get rid of it. They also added, when I heard the cost of rehabilitation, quote, my jaw dropped. My jaw dropped. The second town staff member said, I'm open to restoring the building now, but not leaving it in place. The only viable option to this person was to relocate the building. Um, let me offer a little bit of an olive branch, and that is, I have done a lot of research on ways to make this work, and ways to provide to all the citizens what they said they were looking for, as documented in their wishes in the town survey, and how the safety issues can be resolved and addressed. And I spent a lot of time with town staff, and the only option I could potentially support, I will never support any funding if this building is restored in place. If we look at the potential for relocating the building, that, to me, has some potential, because what you're doing now is, you're moving the building back, you're providing some space in front of it for a plaza and a good sidewalk, which is what's needed. You'll be able to replicate what's on the Lorenzo side and make that vision on the Flatiron Building side. You'll promote walkability. You'll promote people in places. That will draw people downtown in a safe manner to drivers and pedestrians. So what I have to offer is this. I am willing to work with whomever at this table wants to work together and put together a resolution. And that resolution will spell out the option of moving the building. It will lay out some operational guidelines in terms of safety as a guiding principle. It will lay out some benchmarks in terms of what would have to be done before major town funds are spent. It would require an action plan with a go-no-go decision by the council. There would be these checks and balances, um, built into the agreement. I am willing to work on something like that if, I already have it half-crafted, but I don't want to expend any energy on it if there aren't council members who think that might be a workable option. So I'm, I'm willing to do that. I think that's, that's a good compromise. I think it speaks to what the vision plan said should happen for downtown. It speaks to what our citizens said in the town survey, and it addresses the safety considerations. Costs will be an issue. All these options have cost. Um, but that's, I've told you what I'm not willing to support, which is this particular ordinance, and I'm asking for council members to sincerely think about what I'm proposing, 'cause that may be a workable path forward. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing a potential olive branch to it. But still, you, I'll reiterate what you just said. It's like signing, if we agree to what you're proposing, it's like signing the deal at the middle of the night in the parking lot on the hood of a car, because mainly is the fact that you said you've had, you know, some of it done. We're agreeing to something we haven't seen yet, to any type of the benchmarks, what you have put forth in your proposal, which I'm kind of leery on. And also, no matter what we vote, to allow the, the citizen group to obtain any type of funding to offset or reduce taxpayer funds, we need to say we're gonna preserve it. That's probably one of the conditions of most of the grants that they're going after. That they need the backing of this council to move forward with obtaining any, any grants. So I would have said, bring the, at least, half a proposal incomplete is better than nothing at the table. Uh, so without seeing what you're proposing, see if it's workable by the town, by the citizen group, and also by, um, I want to say us, to see if we can agree with your proposal. Right now, it's just, I want to say thank you again, but it's, I, you know, we need to see actual thing, and we need to allow these people to, every opportunity to obtain grants, to offset things. And as council president Poyet said, no matter what happens, taxpayer money's gonna be spent on this. Demolish, save it, put everything else in. And I know it's getting late, so I'm gonna conclude there, 'cause we still got a long schedule.
So as the building currently is, it offers zero economic benefits to the town, and it hasn't for a very long time. And it's a need versus a want. Um, you know, thirty minutes ago, we weren't willing to budget money for the police department, but now, as councilmember Demoter stated, we're looking at this ordinance and approving preservation, but to what extent financially to the taxpayers. Um, so I cannot support this as well. Um, and councilmember Demoter, to kind of add on to what you said, you know, we spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on a vision plan. on a vision plan, but on top of that, we've also spent money on an independent study as well as a structural assessment. So when does the bleeding stop? When do we just get rid of the building? Or, you know, this decision will probably come after I'm gone, but, like, we're talking about raising taxes to build a police station. Where is this money going to come from and how much?
If I could just quickly add a point to pick up on Councilmember Reed's points, and I wanted to add it into mine, but I lost, I lost track of my spending amounts. If you add up the money, again, the money spent on the vision plan, the money spent on the town survey, the $40,000 that this council approved to do the design collective study to get these additional pictures of what some other options would be taking the building down. If you add all that up, plus the fact that, to me, you are, you're really not being respectful to all the citizens in the town who have given you input on what they want to see happen with that building. That amount comes up to over $200,000. So if you vote the way you want in terms of saying you're going to preserve this, you've wasted $200,000 because you're not following through on the vision plan, what the citizens said they want in the survey. We've thrown away $40,000 in a design collective study you're not going to use. That doesn't count all the other money you've spent on the Flatiron Building over the last 20-something years, which comes up to about another $300,000. So I'm getting quite infuriated by, I've been on this council for two years, and our town government seems to never stay with a strategic vision long enough to see it through. You've wasted $200,000. Thank you.
I have several comments. So I heard town residents tonight, first time I've heard more than one person come up and say they were against it. The majority of what I'm hearing is town residents are for preserving this building. And all I heard was they were against the wording in this ordinance. Councilmember Demoter, I heard you say you have a problem with the wording in the ordinance. So I'm questioning, should it have been an ordinance? I've said from the start, I think it should be a motion to preserve, and I'll address that in a minute. Councilmember Demoter, you said you spoke to two highly regarded staff members. One said to tear it down, one said to move it. Are they residents of this town, those staff members?
I don't know, but they're senior staff members who I think are very well respected.
I'm not saying, I respect all our staff. I'm just saying, we're listening to the taxpaying citizens of this town who elected us to do what's best for them. That's the only reason I ask that. So thank you, by the way, for coming up with an option to possibly work together, but the problem I have is we have, for the first time in the 32 years I've lived here, a group of citizens that are dedicated to preserving this building, and they're not going away. In the past, they've come, they've yelled at the council, and they've walked away. I've watched it. I watched it under Delane Hobbs, who's looking at me right now. I've watched it under Bob King. I've watched it under past councils. They came in, they said, "Save it," and they left. These citizens, these residents, this task force is not going away. They have shown us a full plan, and I can pull the chairperson up here if we want. When you say, "What is it going to cost? What are they going to do? What is their plan?" They have shown us a comprehensive plan. They've been coming to us for over a year now. It was a year ago, January, that we asked them to come to us last May with their comprehensive plan. So they do have a comprehensive plan as far as the stages, what they can do, what they need to do, what grants they need to get. They're going nonstop working. We just had a meeting with Preservation Maryland where they detail the steps to preserve this building. So I have an issue with pigeonholing them by saying, "Let's just move it only." So I appreciate your willingness to work together, but I am concerned with saying, "Well, we're going to tell you," after all the work they're doing and what I heard from that Zoom conference with Preservation Maryland, to pigeonhole them by saying you can only do one thing. So they have and have been asking us to just support their efforts to preserve the building. So where are we now? We're in March of 2023. They've already lost the first quarter of this year with all the grants that were available the first quarter of this year. So now it's a whole nother year before they can even go after those grants. And I'm seeing their plan, I'm hearing their plan, and I know that they're out there and that the grants are out there. So they have a path. They've shown us their path. All they've asked is for us to support their efforts as a group of citizens to let them move forward because they can't move forward with any of these grants. I know there's a couple of them coming due in a couple of weeks that Larry Valet has spent an extensive amount of time writing out the grant applications to get ready to just hit the button and go. If this council can just say, "Okay, we support preserving this building." We're not saying you have to move it, you have to paint it purple, you can only move it. We're saying the preservation efforts, which if you come to one of their meetings and you see what they're doing and they've done, they're addressing the safety issue. That's being addressed with the mirrors coming off the side of the car. And I think Lee, I'm glad he brought that up. He spoke about it. In the bigger picture, there's a lot of infrastructure changes that can happen, and there's grants for that to get all those power lines underground, which would help all those businesses going all the way up to State Farm, the Upper Deck. I'm talking the whole area, not just in front of the Flatiron, correct? When they talked about that? I'm looking at the mayor. So I see and I hear that people have a lot of issues with this as an ordinance. I, myself, being the council liaison to Flatiron, questioned why it had to be an ordinance, why we couldn't just have a motion to preserve the building. And I, when you say "they" and "them," and you don't want my support in the, I don't, I don't know who you're referring to because I want your support, and I know those citizens want your support. So I'd like to make a motion that we just make a motion to preserve the Flatiron Building. So if possible, Council President, I'd like to just make a motion to, would that override the motion to, for this ordinance?
There was no motion.
Was. So I make a motion to preserve the Flatiron Building and let that task force move forward. We're not making a commitment to money. We're not making a commitment of taxpayer dollars. We're not saying we're going to raise taxes. We're saying, "Let's let these citizens do what they've been doing and move forward and see what they can come up with." Because we asked them to come with us with this plan, and they did. And the very night they brought the plan last May, about this time at night, 10:45, 10:50 at night, when a lot of them had gone home, suddenly there was a vote to tear it down. So I'd say, "Let's just be fair," and I'd like to make a motion to preserve the Flatiron Building.
Before you continue with that motion, can I offer a few other comments?
Can I just second the motion?
Sure.
Yeah, and I haven't been able to say a word yet.
All right, and then let the mayor go. So I've made the motion. It's seconded. It's on the table. Council President, do you want to defer to the mayor?
Mayor's going to go.
Sure, thanks. So Councilmember Demoter, you did bring up the downtown vision plan, but what you brought up in the downtown vision plan was, the recommendation was to take the building down and build another one. Who's going to build that building? Is that going to come out of taxpayer money? I mean, that's, if that's the recommendation of the downtown vision plan, that's something that we have to consider as well. Even if you're not going to build the building and you're just going to do a plaza, again, you're still spending the town's money to demolish a building and build whatever goes into its place. And what I would contend is you have an active group of which, at 10:45 at night, there's still eight of them sitting out there to see what happens to this building, and there's grants that have been drafted. They're ready to go to find money to preserve the building in some manner. There is no guarantee that the building can be moved. That's where I have a problem with trying to bind us to moving the building. But there are options to make the building safer without moving the building, be it the passage going through it, which may not be the best option, or excavating around it as Larry showed us during, Larry Vey showed us during the workshop. There's options out there. This group has stayed dedicated all the way through this, and I think that we owe them, not just owe them, but I think it is the financial best move to try to get money from outside of the town to do something with that building that improves the safety of it and turns it into something that's viable for the town once again. So that's my position on it.
Yeah, just to correct some things through the record. I mean, my comments weren't just about the type of document. I mean, I ticked through three areas, that the ordinance I didn't think was the appropriate vehicle. I heavily discussed the safety issues. And for me, I mean, I appreciate all the conversation, but you are not addressing the safety issues of that building if you leave it in place because you're not addressing the street, the road issues. I very much listen to and appreciate all of the voices who want to preserve this building, but I also listen to all the other citizens in this town, and I listen to everybody equally. Everybody has an equal voice regardless of whatever your station is in the town of Mount Airy, whether you've been here six months or 10 years, or you're in a historical society or you're in some other group. Everybody's opinion matters equally to me, and I continue to affirm that we had a town survey. I trust the views of all the citizens who took the town survey and what they said. And overwhelmingly, I think our people are very savvy. They understood what the questions were, and they voted 75% to 7% to do something different with that building. So all I'm saying sincerely is, I cannot support that building if it stays in place. I just simply will not support that. And if it moves forward, then it moves forward, but I don't think that's the best decision for the town or what all the citizens really want. So that's just where I'm at.
Well, if I may, if the vote for the motion that Councilmember Galetti has put out here fails, potentially, we lose the eight people in this room and the 30 people that are trying to preserve the building, and you have nothing. At that point, it is truly a taxpayer expense. So, you know, I support Councilmember Galetti's motion, and I hope it passes.
Councilwoman, just for clarification, your motion is not on the ordinance 2023-4. It is just a blanket motion to preserve the building.
Right. I'm kind of just repeating what you guys did about this time on May 2nd. I make a motion to preserve the Flatiron Building and let this Flatiron Task Force that the mayor has appointed continue on their path, especially because they can't pursue any grants to really show us skin in the game until they can get the support that the council says, "Okay, we support preserving it. Go for it, and let's see what grants we get."
Okay. And Councilmember Munder, second to that.
Yes.
All those in favor of Councilwoman Galetti's motion just to preserve the building, not the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
On to ordinance 2023-1. This is MXD Schedule Public Hearing, 7 o'clock.
For the next council, correct?
Next meeting.
Okay.
April 3rd at 7:00.
Thank you. April 3rd, 7:00 PM. Next up is ordinance 2023-5. This is a budget amendment to add an additional $30,000 for public works truck purchase. This is for introduction. I will introduce this. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. Sorry, Councilwoman Galetti.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand up, Councilwoman Galetti. Sorry.
I'll let you second.
All right. Can we let Brian go home? Does anybody have any questions?
No, just the way I understood it.
Need a truck.
We need a truck. Costs have gone up. I've talked to Katie about this today. Since we budgeted last year, the costs have gone up for both the truck and the plow equipment. So as we were talking earlier, inflationary pressures.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Next, ordinance 2023-6. This is a budget amendment to add an additional $6,000 for election expenses. I won't.
It's only for introduction. That wasn't for vote.
Sorry. Oh, I guess we'll see this next time.
You will.
It's late, Council President.
Yeah, I was in the approval process, and then we switched to introductions. Yeah, got it. I will introduce this $6,000. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Moving on to ordinance 2023-7. This is a budget amendment to add $8,350 for the East West Stormwater Management Pond Project. This is also for introduction. I will introduce. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 2023-8. This is to amend the APFO for introduction and referral to, can't breathe, referral to planning. I will introduce and make a motion for referral. Is there a second? Councilmember Demoter, seconds. Lastly, is ordinance 2023-9. This is the wellhead protection. This is for introduction. I will introduce. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Forgive me, during your reports, I have to use the bathroom. So when I get up and leave, it's no offense. The charter amendment workshops, I know that it says 2021-6, but 2021-3, in looking at everything and reviewing YouTube videotape or whatever, 21-3 does have a lot of changes and red lines that I would like to revisit and schedule a workshop. Does anyone have, since four and five are going to become ordinances, does anyone have an issue with going back and revisiting 21-3? And then we will go to 21-6.
I have a question.
Okay.
Can, Tom, is it authorized or legal in Robert's Rules of Order to withdraw that charter amendment, 2021-3? I thought it, I thought we were scheduling 2021-6, but since we're going back to 2021-3, is there an ability for the council tonight to withdraw that charter amendment?
Yeah, on motion, second discussion vote, yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, that thing is a, it's a mess. So, so I, I mean, as a mayor, my recommendation is you withdraw that, and we start with something cleaner.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, it's not just my decision. There are five of us, four of us up here. So if anybody else has anything to say.
I'll make the motion to withdraw 2021-3 to be reintroduced at a later date so we can start at a clean thing. As the mayor says, even after the first workshop, that ordinance is still just a mess, and it'll be very hard to get something workable even before the ballot, if people disagreed with it, to have a potential to even get it on the ballot for a referendum. So the best thing at this point is just to pull it and reintroduce or talk about it later on a clean start.
Is there a second to Carl's motion, Councilmember Munder's motion? Is there a second? All right, there is no second. So I would like to reschedule a workshop for 21-3 to go through that and then to move to 21-6. Can everyone take a look at their calendars, please?
We're not talking the same night, are we? For both of them?
No.
Okay.
I was just talking about the order in which everything should happen.
Got you.
So it's only -3?
-3, sir.
Okay.
About St. Patrick's Day at Liquidity.
That could be either good or bad, Council President. It could go quickly or be a true Irish night.
Does anyone want to throw out dates? I cannot do the week of the 20th.
Okay. I would prefer not the week of the 13th. The 16th is MML Carroll County, I believe.
It's also Rexon Park.
Yeah. The 27th of April's planning, excuse me, March, we're in March here, is Planning Com- yeah, Planning Commission.
28th is Streets and Roads.
30?
Volunteer Dinner.
29th? 29th?
I can't be there, but I could watch the video.
Hey, I'm a.
I would like to eat the turnip.
For all of March, I'm working Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays.
Yeah, so we're in April then?
Yeah, I don't have my April schedule, but I can schedule around it if need.
I mean, you know, April 3rd is council. And then various other things that week. Now, that's. No.
Windsor Shirets.
They've been, to, to be decided still. They have been, it is set for discussion at the Planning Commission Workshop on Thursday. Some things have changed, scheduling. There are some scheduling issues that need to be addressed and worked out.
Maybe you should make that motion to withdraw again.
Does, um, does the, did anyone say the 20th?
Of April or March?
March.
20th?
I can do that.
I can do that.
Yeah.
I can find coverage for, hopefully for some young ones. But if, if not, I can always be via the telephone, which I have no problem doing.
We're talking 3.
Six.
All right.
20?
Um, can we do earl, uh?
5:30-ish?
Five. If I do 5:15, someone can pick up that one. Becky can do that. I may just have to be on telephone just to make my life easier. But if you guys don't mind, how about 5:30?
It works.
All right. If we can mark the 20th at 5:30 for 21-3, and then I will be calling in on that one. Okay? All right, thank you guys for your patience, appreciate it. And let's move to reports and I have to use the restroom.
I'll go ahead and get us started with the mayor's report. The Mount Airy Senior Task Support Group is conducting their second listening session on March 7th, which is tomorrow at Shaladon in conjunction with the Rotary Club at the Mount Airy, uh, at their Mount Airy meeting at 6:00 p.m., again at Shaladon. If anyone's interested, please contact Town Hall or leave a message for myself, the mayor. The Historical Society meets the first Tuesday of each month at 7:00 p.m. in the basement of the fire station. The Hall of Fame Dinner will be on March 21st at the American Legion. Tickets are $30 and on sale at the Blossom and Basket Boutique. Congratulations to Michael O'Brien, Doc O'Brien, Pat Rockenberg, and Peter Helt, Kim Phibus, and Joseph Rannier on their induction to the Hall of Fame. The Volunteer of the Year 2022 will be held, dinner will be held on March 30th at the Carnival Grounds, the Activities Building. All commission and task force members are invited. We will recognize the volunteer who contributed a significant amount to our community throughout 2022. Lastly, but not least at all, Mount Airy lost a dear friend. Jack Rains passed away on February 26. Uh, Jack Rains knew just about everything in regard to railroading in Mount Airy. I got to know him personally when he helped to restore the interior of McKenzie the Caboose. Jack was an excellent finished carpenter and documented all 800-plus hours spent restoring the interior. He, along with his son Phil and Doc O'Brien, made the caboose a beautiful mini museum, visitor center, and historic monument in our town. The finished product reflects a parlor feel that only true artisans such as Jack Rains could realize and bring to completion. We will miss him. Thank you.
Actually, I, I have a, I have a question, Larry, for you. Regarding PFAS, I was wondering how things were going with the sampling of all of our wells? And when do you expect to have the data that you can share with, with the public?
We did sample all 11 wells. Barney has that data. I, he cursory told me about it, but I haven't sat down and looked at it all, so.
Are you seeing anything above levels that we should be concerned about per MDE?
So I was just putting those together the last couple of days. Um, we have.
Hey Barney, can we just, not to interrupt, it's 11:05. It's good afternoon. Can we set a more formal date to, to discuss instead of off the cuff on these, on, on this report to to topic?
Sure, yep. And I can send you the results if you like.
I, I like to see the results and I think it's, needs to be very timely. You can't, I'm just, I'm making a comment. Please don't interrupt.
Okay, sorry.
I think it's important that the citizens know what the status is of, of the safety issue and the information gets out as soon as possible after it's appropriately vetted or whatever. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to Recreation and Parks Board, Council Secretary Reed.
Uh, the Recreation and Parks Board met on February 16th. There were no guest speakers. Most of the conversation surrounded field spring allocation for baseball and softball. Uh, the board voted to continue to support MEA and 4 County as opposed to allowing a third organization come in and utilize those fields. Um, it would have taken time away from MEA. Um, so they, they were due diligent in their discussion and I personally think they came to the right decision. Um, the community garden is vamping up again. Um, they are looking for gardeners, sponsors, and volunteers. If you are interested in a plot, they are $50 for a large plot and $25 for a small plot. Uh, Love Our Park Week is coming up in late April. Um, for whatever reason, when I took my notes that night, I didn't have the dates correct. Um, but if you go to the town website, you can get more information on that event as well as the community garden. Uh, the Windy Ridge Trails continue to move forward. The Ellis's host volunteer days to clear trails. Again, volunteer hours convert to a monetary value when they're applying for grants. Um, the skate park, so far they have raised $24,000. They hosted their last fundraiser at JMP Pizza on February 27th. They are hoping that the town considers partially funding the first pla, first phase of installation in the next budget cycle. Um, there was also some conversation about the volleyball court at Watkins Park. Um, they are talking about replacing the pole system as well as correcting the, um, apparently there's water that collects on the court. So Brian, if you're still here, I'm going to call you out because you did commit to fixing the, the drainage issue in late spring. Um, and the board actually did talk about potential other locations, but they deemed that the current location is the best spot. Um, that is the quick version. The next meeting is March 16th, 7:00 p.m. via Zoom, and that concludes my update.
Thank you. EDC planning, Councilmember.
I will make a quick. EDC meeting was held February 22nd at 7:00 p.m. Share the report, that was Donna Marie Needle's last meeting. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on who you talk to, especially she'll, if you talk to her, she is moving out of town, retiring, and moving down to Delaware. Uh, so we are definitely sorry to see her go. So currently Ray Miller is now the chair. And anyone out there that's listening, we, the EDC needs commission members. So if you want a business owner, a member of the community, if you want to start charting how this town develops economically, the businesses that come in town, listen to the businesses, please put your application into the mayor for becoming a member of EDC. Uh, also, to see what's going on, please check the Mount Airy Main Street website. Uh, there is a list and a host of events coming up this month, next month, and over the summer and in the fall. Any businesses that want to become a member of the Chamber of Commerce, please contact Ray Miller or check on their website online. Uh, various other topics were discussed and the date of the next meeting is March 22nd at 7:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. Now onto the Planning Commission. As the mayor, as I indicated to the mayor, uh, please stay tuned for the revised dates for the BEC Shiret, uh, due to, to, due to some scheduling. Uh, we, it will be discussed at the workshop on Thursday to obtain new dates and times. Uh, so please stay tuned for that. Uh, some of the things that were introduced was a new sign for the Delta Home Group. That was denied mainly under the fact that the type of sign that he wanted part of the apparatus is an LED sign and unfortunately, right currently, they are not allowed in town code. Um, as we discussed, text amendment ordinance 2023-01 was passed with a favorable recommendation via the Planning Commission. Um, the Cube Smart in Twin Ridge Professional Park, if I understand it right, was the final plan, was approved or tentatively approved with the changes that were proposed at the, that was brought, that were brought forth. That was a five to one vote, five for, one against. Uh, the next Planning Commission meeting is actually this Thursday, not commission, a workshop, a work session slash workshop for the land use portion of the master plan update will be this Thursday, March 9th at 6:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. Also, as I indicated, the dates for the BEC Shiret will be discussed also at that time. The next Planning Commission meeting is March 27th at 7:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. That concludes my report.
Next up, Councilmember Demoter, Recycling, Sanitation, Main Street Safety Task Force.
Okay, so recycle last met on January 18th. Some of the things that are ongoing, we're working on the plan for improvements to the downtown trash and recycle center. The design has been completed and my understanding is materials have been ordered to make some progress on that. The 2023 Bulk Trash Event will be held on Saturday, April 29th at the municipal lot. And we will work with the town staff and with the mayor to work out arrangements for residents who might need assistance with getting bulk items to the municipal lot. Our next meeting will be held on March 15th at 7:00 p.m. Main Street Safety, we last met on February 23rd. Most of our time was spent reviewing the data and the data presentation that you heard, uh, earlier, which almost seems like two different time zones from now. But earlier during this meeting, Officer Brooks presented that data. And we think it was a very positive result that we saw in the data. We're continuing to work with Maryland MDOT District 7 on their speed studies on Main Street. This is all being done as part of our request to consider lowering the speed limit to all 25 throughout the Main Street corridor. Uh, we are helping out and supporting the teen driving event, which is scheduled for April 15th. Um, just as an example of some of the spinoff uses of the Main Street Safety Task Force. So all of these, the educational campaign signs that we developed and the brochures, they will be used to help support that teen driving event. So again, multiple benefits that are coming out of Main Street Safety. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Galetti, Streets and Roads, beautification, Flatiron Task?
Yep, first thing I want to hit on beautification, met on February 21st. I have a correction to last month's minutes, although we do, we don't record them in the papers we have. I had said that they met in January and they did not. It was canceled the day before, so that was my mistake. I was going off of the agenda. So just, that's the correction. But they met February 21st. They're getting ready for spring planting, weeding. We've gotten some trees, some tree donations, so watch for them, there'll be a lot going on. Flatiron Building, there was no task force meeting. There was a Zoom meeting with Preservation Maryland, I think the mayor has that in his report. And one thing I wanted to add, we forgot to point out. So thank you for voting positively to preserve it. We have received numerous letters of support from State Senator Reedy and Foden, Delegate Tomlinson, and Delegate Boucher is writing one right now. And we've got requests out to Senators Carden and Van Hollen. A lot of the grants that they have going for, it helps to have that support. So, um, Flatiron, look for more things to come from them. And Streets and Roads, there doesn't meet in February. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 28th, 6:30 via Zoom and Facebook. The, the teen driving event will be April 15th. We'll have more information after our March meeting and update from Lucy Regal. And a couple of things, I think the mayor touched on them, but I was actually in Annapolis twice in the last month, wants to testify to the Budget and Taxation Committee for our town's urban renewal initiative. And, um, then in a Zoom conference with the Frederick delegation to get their unanimous support, which they did vote unanimously that day to support it. And then good news, it did go in the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee and we got unanimous support from that committee. So the mayor put in his report that he spoke to the delegates and we'll be waiting for the update on that. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Uh, Water Sewer and Sustainability. Uh, water and sewer, we talked about rainfall. We talked about, uh, creating a draft flyer for proper medication and drug disposal. Uh, of course, there's always a disposal bin at the Mount Airy Police Station. Uh, we also talked about PFAS updates. Um, we, we did have a question, Barney, if you don't mind. Um, are we putting, uh, the, we, we wrote a grant to help solve or mitigate some of the PFAS at 7 and 11. Is that at wells or is that at a pump station?
That is at three, uh, different pump stations. Uh, water treatment stations.
So, so three go into the one? Am I understanding that correctly? Or we're going to do it at three different locations?
Three different locations.
Okay. And are those wells or pump stations?
Those are stations.
Okay.
Which have multiple wells coming to each one.
Okay, 7 and 11 though, right?
711 is one of the stations.
Okay.
Station three.
All right, but there are three total?
We have.
And there's two other locations.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we have five total pumping stations, of which we have a grant in to remediate three of them.
Okay.
Even though only one of them tested above the, the level.
All right, we were just asking for clarification for that, no problem. Um, and then the, uh, uh, committee also talked about 2022-35, which was the wellhead protection. Um, my next meeting for that is April 5th here at Town Hall. Um, Sustainability Commission had a, had a lengthy meeting about Green Fest um, and having, uh, working with the town as well as some other committees. So be on the lookout for that. And then we are also really confused about trying to get the garden ready or not trying to get the garden ready and if it's frost or if it's not and, you know, everything else. Thank God, that's above my pay grade. Um, Tom, uh, report, please.
Attended the Planning Commission meeting. There were a number of agenda items out there that I assisted in addressing. Uh, the annexation agreement for Buffalo Road was signed. Uh, if there is no referendum petition, uh, uh, forthcoming, then the annexation will take effect on March the 23rd. Uh, and then otherwise worked on the resolutions and ordinances on the agenda tonight.
And we received the Town Administrator's Report, Code Enforcement Report, as well as the Zoning Administrator Report. To make our meeting even longer this evening, we have three closed meetings. Just joking. Um, first one is 3-305B. I'm not going to read all of that, but it's for personnel matter. Next one is 3-305B3. This is for land acquisition and then 30, 3-305B subsection 1. This is for salaries. At the conclusion of our closed meetings, we will be adjourned. Councilmember Demoter?
Aye.
Councilmember Munder?
Aye.
Aye. Councilwoman Reed?
Aye.
Councilwoman Galetti?
Aye.
We're going to move into a closed session. Thank you, everyone.